Well, you're quieting down, so I guess it must be time to start. My name is Dave Barrington. I'm the moderator for Town in Jericho, and I want to welcome you to your meeting. I really missed it. It's great to be here. And thanks for the great turnout. People are going to forget there's a town meeting and what you do. But it looks like somebody remembered. I'm going to talk informally for a few minutes and do a couple of informal things, and then we'll call the meetings to order. First thing I want to do right off the bat is to welcome our legislators who are here and want to just say hello to. We'll call them right up right now. Or you can be down there. So if you can talk to the truth in your microphone. There's one out in the middle of the... Or you can come on up here. Don't be shy.
Hi, good morning. Thank you all for putting your trust in me and electing me to the State House for the first time. I started in January. Can you hear me okay? Yeah. Edie Grant is my name. I really appreciate representing you. I appreciate the support. I have been, as I've been telling folks, overwhelmed with information there and just cramming as much into my brain as I possibly can. And it's been great. I love it. And I really appreciate your patience. I've got a lot of people reach out to me and say, "I know you're new, but..." And I appreciate that because it's a lot to negotiate there, a lot to figure out, and I'm looking forward to serving you. So thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Representative Trevor Squirrel, and I also appreciate you supporting my candidacy and my work in the State House. This will be my fourth biennium. I spent the first two bienniums on the Natural Resources Committee. Environmental issues are very close to me. And the last two bienniums on House Appropriations. And certainly, the last two years have been incredible in terms of the funding and the resources that have come to the state of Vermont. And those have been the big challenges that our House Appropriations and some appropriations have dealt with in terms of managing over $1 billion in additional funding. One of the challenges for us now over the next biennium is to look at how well we spent that money, how strategic that we've been. And also looking at our budgets as we wind down this, what I would call, extra federal money. We've been very fortunate in the state of Vermont. We've had a congressional delegation that's been very supportive of our efforts, making sure that we have small state minimums. So on a per capita basis, we really have received quite a large amount of money into the state. But again, I want to say thank you to all of you and certainly feel free to give a touch. Thank you very much.
So a couple of things that I'm accustomed to doing. First of all, I want to make it very clear that the citizens own this meeting. This is your meeting. It is your chance to understand the budget and the other articles that are on this warning and to come to consider decision about how you want to vote on each of these articles. And as you may know, I have written a short, one-page guide to how to make things work well here at Town Meeting. It's towards the front of your town warning. So if you've got that at hand, it will make things move better. You must be recognized to speak. And if by any chance there are any people here or not from Jericho, you may not speak. And I have... This is actually my 25th year of this. I don't know if you've been counting. I've run a trust system this whole quarter century. And that is that the people who are here and not from Jericho will know better than to speak up without a license. And I'm going to continue that. Even if they're in town here, you have to sit over there and you have, you know, Section B if you're not a citizen, that sort of thing. But that's not how I do business. We have a microphone issue this year more than usual. If you're a veteran of age, you know the microphones are total pains. But it's worse than usual because the Recording Secretary is not with us today, which means we really must get everything audible on the recording, which is going to be made of the meeting today, so the Recording Secretary can... What?
I said, including their name.
Including your names. And I will probably ask you for your name if you forget. I hope I remember every time. But what that means is there's only one microphone out there and then one here that I can run around with. So as much as possible, help me get microphones around the people who want to speak. Especially since the roads are so long. We've got to get microphones in there so you don't have to stand up just to come talk. So help me out with that today. I suppose you've seen the displays out in the main hall. And one of the things that's gratifying, if we reinvigorate our meeting in person, is that there's lots of displays, including from the Planning Commission and the Conservation Commission. Now, you may have noticed the wastewater. The feasibility site, which is worth taking a look at. And of course, the Affordable Housing Display, which is well done as well. And a number of other displays. And of course, there's the town libraries, traditional. You buy a book and you give it to them as part of donations and helping out the town. And I also want to thank the patients for giving me breakfast and making me too. I think that's as far as I'm going to take that. Now, if I could just say a little bit about what's going to happen in this meeting if you look at the warning. We have... And so to a certain extent, I'm talking to people who happen not to have been here before. And I know a great many folks here have been. But I'll just remind you that there are basically one, two, three, or five groups of articles on the warning. The first two directly relate to budget matters, and the first of which is the budget. And that will take us quite a while because the Select Board will, as usual, want to acquaint you with the nature of the budget and their decisions about making the budget. And you should interrupt with questions. At any point, I'll recognize you pre-ask the question at any point in that discussion. The next three articles are routine articles, what I sometimes call boilerplate. If you're new to this business, you may not realize that each of those three are enabling articles that make the town do business, able to do business, and we routinely approve them. But if you are curious about what the heck they mean, by all means, speak up and ask about them. And then we have a series of four articles. These are six through nine, that have to do with exempting properties from taxation, which you'll want to hear about. And then a special article, Article 10, relating to food hubs. The report of the town officers is... It's not actually done verbally. The town officers' reports are in your warning. If you have any considerations about those reports, you should bring up what's going on with those reports at the time. I will ask you if there's anything that you want to bring up and have discussed in those reports. Otherwise, we will leave the reports to stand as submitted. And finally, Other Business. And I want to make one special note about Other Business. And also, at the same time, say, the Front Port Farm has been just alive lately. You know, it's just so gratifying to a moderator to see that kind of conversation. And you know, the Front Port Farm is the envy of the country. We're known for being civilized, which is sort of odd that you're famous just by being civilized. But anyway, one of the things that stood out on the Front Port Farm was the discussion about the ARPA business and relating to town decisions. And so the Select Board under Other Business would like to begin by talking about ARPA. Do that, do it for us. All right. And now, having used up half the meaning on introducing it, might call Jericho Town Meeting to order. I guess I should explain one other thing. This is Eric. This is really explaining this perfectly. So when I inherited this job, I inherited it from John Fay, who, I don't know if you know the name Fay, but they got here in 1780s. It was a while ago. And I was a kid then, and I was impressed with John Fay's work as town moderator. And he got accustomed about introducing the articles on the warning, which I have maintained. And that is to simply ask you what you want to do with the article. It's a very peculiar phraseology, but I love it. It's just different. And so I, for each of these articles, will ask you what you want to do with it. And you might say, "What the heck do I do with that?" And I said, "Well, that is your invitation to place the motion on the board." And the wise thing to do is say, "I move to approve..." ...article whatever it is. You don't even have to want to... You don't even have to vote on it. You don't have to vote yes and again. We've got to get it on the floor. We can't discuss an article lists on the floor. And that's what John Fay wanted you to do, and that's what I want you to do. I want you to begin by placing the motion on the floor for ARPA. All right? Good. So the way this works, you may know that all of this depends on Robert's Rules of Orders as constrained by state statute and town custom. But one thing I need to do is read each article. So we'll begin there. Article 1, Shallow Voters Approve the Repose Fiscal Year Ending 2024 Budget of $3,382,480, Including Spending on Anticipated Funds Such As State and Federal Grants and Gifts. What do you wish to do with Article 1, please?
Stop moving. Ryan Appleberry.
Thank you. And the second?
Second, Elizabeth King.
Oh, boy. I like the way this is going already. All right. I will pass the podium to the Select Board and remind them that they have to stick into a microphone. So don't forget to move the microphone around.
I know. Trying to remember a little bit.
And you're going to have it close to your mother.
Yeah. Does this work?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I've got an allergy tickle here, so...
And you might mention your name. I should be there.
Oh, anyway, I'm Catherine McMaines. I'm Chair. And we're, you know, the Select Board is excited to, you know, be back in Town Meeting and see all the people willing to come and speak with this thing. And what we will do then is we've got A B this year, that they're going to put the budget up there. But if you want to follow along in the Town Report, it's on page 12. And I will start with the fun stuff. And then we start with one, general tax, line one, general tax revenue. And we're asking for $2,913,030. And this represents the property taxes that need to be collected to cover the gap in expenditures between what we have and what we need. And that represents an increase of 3.5%. And however, with the projection of the increase in the grand list, it is expected that the overall tax rate for the operations of the town will be increased by just 1.61% or about $6.42 per 100,000, which is equivalent to $19.26 per $300,000, which is, you know, generally used for an average car. Probably not in this day and age, but that's what it used to be.
Are you able to hear the announcer all right? Is it going all right?
Oh, good.
A little louder. Yes, a little louder.
You're trailing off a bit there.
Okay.
Just hold it close. Hold it close.
Hold it close?
Yeah.
I don't want to wear out the voice and end up coughing and leaving. Anyway, lines two, three, and four are... We generally just project these without any changes from Budget 23. And these are the interest on the delinquent taxes, the penalties on the delinquent taxes in the prior year, the delinquent tax. So there's really no change there. Intergovernmental, not much is happening there. The budget numbers are pretty much the same as fiscal year 23. But we do see a difference in state aid for roads. And that's because the state has more funding available for the roads. And so we anticipate an increase of about $20,000. And this is just what the state gives to the towns based on an allocation formula to help local municipalities take care of their roads. The other difference is municipal road grant and aid. And we're projecting $24,000 for fiscal year 24. And this is a grant fund from the Agency of Transportation that supports projects that meet the best management practices for road stormwater as required by the Municipal Road General... Municipal Road General Permit. And it's a... And this really refers to gravel roads. It's came out of the Better Back Roads Program. Next, and so that gives us an intergovernmental, total intergovernmental of $282,100. Licenses and fines, there's very little change over the years with, you know, budget. But there is a difference this year on dog licenses. $400 doesn't seem like much, but based on the total number, that's like a 30% increase. And this is happening because people are not registering their dogs before April 1st. And so they pay the full freight for registering your dog. And the reason April 1st is particularly important is that's the date that all dogs have to be registered. And up to that point, the Select Board over the past few years has subsidized this for everybody who comes in and registers a dog, and it's free at that point. And this is because years ago, we've made that as a safety protocol in order to incentivize people registering their dogs because that means they're vaccinated for rabies. And that way, people don't have to worry about other dogs. And so we thought that this is the best way to deal with that issue. The other increase is in restoration and computerization. That's going from $15,000 to $18,000, which is a 20% increase of $3,000. And $4... In terms of the... Every time somebody records something in the town clerk's office, there's a fee. And $4 of this page recording fee goes into a special fund that is used to preserve and digitize all the land records. So eventually, all of them will be on digital. And so we have a total license and fines of $131,850. Miscellaneous, again, this is a fairly standard. In fact, we don't anticipate any real changes from our budget from fiscal year 23. However, I do want to point out that on line 29, it says our solar lease. This is the money that our solar farm generates because they have leased the land from the town on the old dump. And the solar energy is sold elsewhere, but we at least get the lease funding from that. And this is then for total revenues, $3,382,480. And what I typically do here, and this year is very small, is after we do total revenues, we go to the capital budget because these are usually some of the bigger ticket items that you will find incorporated within your budget. And that's on page 19. And this year... Is it up there? That is really cool.
It's a different document.
Anyway, the capital budget is page 19. But we start with buildings and property, the Jericho Library improvements. I mean, it is, you know, we've been doing $10,000 a year. And some years, they spend it. Some years, they build it up. Like last year, they used money to paint the building. And we expect that this will also change in the future because it does need work. And they are looking to fuel switch. And right now, the state has a new state program that they're doing for municipalities to encourage fuel switching. The money is not expected to be available until for 12 to 18 months. But right now, they're looking at folks who are doing auditing and things like that of the buildings that may be eligible for fuel switching. The question is how much Chittenden County is going to get because it's not considered a low resource county. There are a lot of other municipalities they're focusing on with low resources and high costs. But that doesn't mean there aren't pockets within Chittenden County that may qualify for this particular grant program and particularly historic buildings. So we're hoping that that will help the library move from kerosene into something that is much more energy efficient in the future. The high rate garage is very much the same thing. We're budgeting $31,500 for this year. And again, that building is also aging. It's outdated. The equipment's no longer fitting in there particularly well. Things sit outside. And the warning is, we'd like to say that eventually, that building will also have to be replaced. And just to point out, the line number is where you will find these values within the Rettene budget. Highways, we're only going to be using paving skunk hollow. And that's a substantial investment there. That's why you see the $295,000 for the... That's our asphalt paving improvement. It's just skunk hollow for $295,000. So this year, we're only projecting $336,500 on the capital budget, which is one of the lower amounts we've had in past years. I will point out, though, on bridges and culverts, there's no number there. But we do expect to see that in the future because Bridge 15 is on the AOT list to be replaced.
Bridge 15. Sounds like Area 51.
Yeah.
Bridge 15 is the bridge right near the highway department in the old... Right at that dip there in the road.
Yeah, by Fitzsimmons.
Yep.
Yeah, and so there's no project that we know of planned right now spending for fiscal year 24. But we expect to see expenses for that fiscal year 25. However, municipalities, I don't know if anybody else got it, but I, as Chair, got a letter from the Governor's Office yesterday saying that the Governor wants all the municipalities who have projects to support the Governor's budget to put aside a matching fund value. I think, I can't remember what it was, $50 million, something like that, so that they can bring down the maximum amount of federal funding available to the state. And this means that Bridge 15 could move up to the scoping studies much quicker, which means it will be replaced quicker. So that's pretty exciting. And I forgot the $5,000. I didn't mention the fact that the land improvements is no longer on the capital budget. That's within the most property. So our total project costs are $336,500. And now we go to the regular budget expenses, which will be weighed.
Okay, I'm going to do some sections of this.
Sorry, I have a question on one of those items.
Sure.
I'm glad that I took that on the recording, so go ahead.
Yep.
Sorry, I just have a very quick question about the skunk hollow.
I started with your name. I got to try.
Sorry, I'm Elizabeth King. I have a quick question about the skunk hollow paving. I live on Skunk Hollow. And I'm wondering if there's any... Anything about widening the road or making there be enough access for a pedestrian or a bike to safely navigate as part of that project?
Unfortunately, no. We talked about that years ago when it was decided to pave Skunk Hollow.
Yeah, I know. I lived there then, too.
Yeah, I know. Longtime family, longtime family. The problem is, we talked to the engineers about widening the road. One, it requires there are areas of ledge. And two, if we tried to add on a, you know, I don't... Add an additional paved section that would be for bikers and stuff, that line would crack frequently and make it worse for bikers because you have all these bumps and bunks and stuff. They said it just isn't feasible unless you start with the wider base.
Okay. Yes, I just wanted to have it on the record that we wish we could walk on our road anymore.
Oh, I know.
I know you know that, but I wanted it on record.
Yeah, that's good to have. I mean, it really is. I mean, we're sorry that, you know, it wasn't...
Yeah, hi. My name's Dave Schuler. I have a question about the licenses and fines section in its entirety. This is lines, you know, 15 through 25. Looking back at history, 2021, we had $227,000. I'm assuming the budget was probably about $129,000. So it's almost $100,000 over on additional income. You know, we had a substantial amount back in '22. We don't know '23. And yet, the number seems to be staying the same. So I'm wondering if $131,000 is really lowballing it? And that should be more than $170,000 or $180,000? Because all it does is it provides money, additional income, and I don't know where it goes when it gets spent. So we have more money coming in, but where does it go?
We tend to be conservative because that number can fluctuate depending on the year. You just never know exactly. I mean, so you take a statistical average, and that's the number that is used because that's the best practices for accounting. If there is extra funding come in, it goes into the unrestricted general fund balance, which then can be used in the future for other projects.
Okay. I guess statistically, it's a base, and the numbers are staying the same and not really changing much.
Yeah, I was surprised. You're right. When you look at 2021...
I'd be interested in seeing more of a 10-year number at some point to say, "Are we really undervaluing this? Or is this giving us extra money to spend in random places that we don't control?"
Point taken, but no, we just have... Because if you look at the difference, that one was $227,000. That's huge. But when we came to fiscal year '22, it was only $160,000, which, you know, that may be a consistent number in the future. What we do when we budget, you look at past numbers. And if you see a trend, then we will change what is budgeted in that to better reflect what actual costs are. Sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down. But, you know, you don't want to be too aggressive with your number because if it comes in less, then you have less money than you anticipated, and you have to start changing what you're going to spend money on. Because we have to stay within our budget.
I want to thank David for mentioning line numbers. And I think if we could generally keep... It really helps people know what line they're on.
Before I jump into this expenditure, I just want to recognize one of the consequences of not approving the Surf Highway is that Skunk Hollow is a corridor. And I really appreciate what Elizabeth says. That road is not safe to be traipsing along. And for all the gnashing of teeth that we had about the Surf Highway, good, bad, different, save the raccoons, whatever the thing was, now we paid the price for that. So to look at this expenditure, I'm on page 13 and line 100. And Town Treasurer, which is really a person in a little bit, Amy and Brian, and you'll see the salary there bumped up substantially, at least in terms of percentage. That was a conscious adjustment of that salary that reflected the responsibilities that this person has for the financial affairs in town. So that's the explanation for that. You see the benefits changed a little bit. And so the overall Town Treasurer expenditures went up by $18,000 there. Then Administrative and Select Board, that's John, Paula, and the Select Board. And you'll look at the salaries here, some adjustment. The benefits actually went down just a little bit. The benefits actually went down just a little bit. We have, we're putting money aside, we do have money for the audit. You'll see the legal expenses on line one oh nine. I should have brought my Garfield ruler with me, make this easier. On legal expenses, that went down substantially, but the overall legal expenses haven't gone down substantially. They're actually in a different section of this budget because we wanted the numbers to reflect where we were incurring those costs more accurately. So you'll see, if you're looking at it going, whoosh, that looks good. In fact, that money has been put in a different department, if you will. Office equipment and computers needed some updates. You see that number, travel subscriptions. I'm looking here for anything that jumps out, postage. Nothing really has changed till you come down to, oh, thank you. Now I get what you were doing, David. Thank you. This isn't my Garfield ruler, but this'll work. It's just, you'll see the town report is just costing a little bit more money, negligible amount of money. And you'll see that overall administrative costs. Oh, I did want to mention the server. Go back up to line one-ten. Computer support and repairs. We have changed the company that is responsible for overseeing the web and the security features of the system that we use at Town Hall. We've purchased some new equipment. And this was an important update. If anybody is at least familiar or looked in the closet when the door used to be open at a select board meeting, it was time to upgrade some of the, some of the equipment that we had. This expenditure also covers the security, which ensures that the financial transactions of town government are of the highest security. So if there's a transfer of money or somebody's getting paid electronically or whatever, this is where that money comes out of. Town clerk, just as a reminder, the town clerk sits a little apart from the select board. You know, the town clerk doesn't work for the select board. It's a separate thing. But that section of the budget is in here. That's Jessica and now Megan. And you'll see here, salaries adjusted a little bit, benefits, in part because of change of staff, we offer benefits for people. And board elections gone down substantially. We're all grateful that we're not in the middle of an election cycle right now. Legal expenses, and you'll see down here, travel, meeting and subscriptions have gone up just a little bit. So that's the town clerk. Listening, that's Lori, Terry and Martha. Any questions? Am I going too fast? Okay. Then listening, you'll see that, again, Lori, Terry and Martha are in that department. You see the salaries here. Our salary increases, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of pressure, if you will, pressure is kind of a strong word, about salaries. I was just reading in the Rutland Herald this weekend, Bolton, twenty to thirty percent base salaries is what they had to go up to make their operations work. We, as a select board, we're pulling our hair out about some of this stuff, putting things together. But we've got great people, and we feel like this is, this was the right thing to do, some of these slight tweaks. Health office, I don't know if Richard's here, but Richard continues to be our health officer. I don't know if Elizabeth's here, but we thank Richard for his work. Planning and zoning is Linda and Chris. Linda is the new planner. And you can see here, salaries. Benefits, I just turned to page fourteen. I'm at the top of page fourteen. And then right under benefits, you'll see legal expenses. And that's where the expenses that used to be coded to administration have been moved to. I think, but overall, legal expenses might be planning for another two thousand or something. I didn't put that number down. And then you'll see on line one forty-five, other purchase services. We had, we have some consultant fees for the new town plan, imagery mapping, and that's where that expense, total planning and zoning went up six point two. And then I will pass it over to Catherine. Were there any questions on any of those? Yes, please, if you could come up to the mic. And say your name, even though we know who you are.
Anne Levine, can you explain why there was an actual on line one forty-one, the actual of forty-six thousand dollars for year end twenty-twenty-two?
So Anne Levine asked for more information about the actual for twenty-twenty-two on line one forty-one, which reads.
Legal expenses.
Legal expenses. So are you asking for what, what particular?
What caused that to be so high?
There were multiple court cases that we had to deal with, some with zoning, most of it with zoning violations that had accumulated over the years, and they were being fought in court. So John, in fact, John Abbott came in and he went, you know, here he is, brand-new town administrator, and he's got these multiple court cases to deal with, and he's so glad at the end of twenty-twenty-two, when pretty much they were all resolved. So it was unfortunate. We don't like to spend tax burden money unnecessarily, but you want to be able, if you're going to have regulations or you want to have areas that are, need to be cleaned up to protect their other neighbors that are near them, you have to spend the money in court.
Thank you.
Oh, it's mine anyway. I get to do highways and bridges because it's.
You love it, that's right.
Laughing makes that term click up. Salaries, again, it's another item that has gone up because CDL drivers are in short supply across municipalities, across, across commercial driver, commercial companies. And so you have to be competitive in this market in order to get a CDL driver. And at the moment, we are still short one person. We've been fortunate enough to hire an additional person, so at least we're up to five rather than the four that were trying to do all the plumbing and stuff earlier this season. Benefits went down a little bit because with new people, the benefits packages change depending on what their needs are. Mostly the travels, you know, whether you have been at the office equipment, travel meetings, subscriptions, telephone, electricity, building heat, all are pretty much budgeted as the same. But in twenty, on line one fifty-four, building maintenance and repairs, we have budgeted twenty-five thousand. And this is, you know, the aging building needs work. We had thirty-five thousand in the capital budget, and that will show up, that shows up in the buildings section of the budget. This is specifically for smaller repairs, maintenance, things that happen in the building. And so unfortunately, that's gone up a bit from, you know, ten thousand to twenty-five thousand. That's more than a bit. And then on line one, I should write it, one fifty-six, professional consultants, we now budget fifteen thousand dollars there. And this is for a consulting engineer to help the road foreman as he needs. And it's been very useful at this end. The small equipment supplies, that's line one fifty-seven. Again, inflation has hit all kinds of things. And so the small equipment, this is maintenance, you know, as well as the equipment maintenance repair, again, we had to raise that, but just inflation on the parks and trying to get them is difficult. The hired equipment, that also went up because we, this is what it costs us to rent equipment for the different projects that we do that we don't have the equipment for, and it's still less than actually buying the equipment. You'll see bigger changes in summer sand, gravel, summer road gravelstone, that's line one sixty, winter sand, one sixty-one, and a big change in salt, one sixty-two. And all of these have gone up substantially because this is what the marketplace is charging us to, and we can't not have these things to maintain our roads and keep things safe. And with the Better Back Roads, the joke is across the state, you know, gravel's gone up substantially because it's not only used for roads, but certain rip rapid sizes and stuff are also going up because of the Better Back Roads program. Let's see, we have, the next chain is in oil, gas and diesel. That's self-explanatory. We also have the prices of gasoline spike, and so we budgeted an increase there. And then tree brush maintenance, these are, this has gone up from twenty-five thousand, that's line one seventy-four. It's gone up from twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand. And this is because higher tree surfaces, which we use for several bigger trees and things, so their road crew doesn't feel comfortable removing, and their costs because of their fuel and their equipment has all gone up, so they, you know, charge the towns more. And so the total highways and bridges is one million five hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars for a total increase of almost nine percent there. And that's, that's your biggest part of your budget. That's essentially forty-six percent of our budget spent on roads, highways and bridges. So, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a big cost to the community, but we have about sixty-eight miles of road to take care of. And now to Wayne for summer rec.
Anne Levine has a question?
Yep.
Did somebody grab the microphone and get it over to Anne?
Yep.
Can you hear Anne Levine?
Wait a minute, please.
Okay.
I really got to make this happen.
Hi, Anne Levine. I've always had an issue about this. We don't put in the projected actuals for our last budget year, which I wish we, wish we did because we only look forward to the budget for this following word. We never reflect on what you did in the last, you know, nine months. So under, if your projected actual for line item one sixty-four, road improvements, under fiscal year of twenty-three, is that two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand being spent?
It will be spent, it will be spent before the end because that's the other half of spending for some skunk hollow. It's not just two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand for paving. It will be, it's almost five hundred thousand.
Oh, okay. So that's going to be done.
And you get a better deal if you put money, when you go out to bid for asphalt, if you have a large project. So you split it between the two fiscal years so that they, they start paving in the spring, you know, so that's fiscal year twenty-three, and they'll finish the project in fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay. Erica, thank you.
That's a microbiologist who now knows about asphalt paving details. Any other questions on highway bridges?
Hi, Kyle Magida. I just have two, two quick questions. One.
Wayne.
Kyle Magida, M-A-G-I-D-A. On line one fifty-five, maybe I guessed it, the equipment purchase lease, guess what was that? And then on one fifty-three, the building heat looks like it was over budget last year for reasons I'm sure we all assume, but doesn't seem to have got a lift on this year. Are we worried we're going to be under, going to have an over expenses there?
Unfortunately, I expected the building heat will be over. Equipment purchase and lease, this is where we have changed how the, you will see this. I will do, there's an N section where we actually take what, because that's the equipment we're buying, and it's a lease purchase agreement. And then you also, so now only you see the equipment purchase, but then you see the actual funding for that, both together. And that, we're doing this for several things without the budget so that it's more clear how the revenue and expenditures are balanced on these particular items. Wayne will even talk about that when it comes to summer rec. So that way, rather than flipping back and forth to go, oh, line so-and-so on revenue, and then it's line so-and-so in the budget, you're not flipping back and forth these things that actually have a balance to them in terms of revenue and expenditures are listed separately so that it's easier to see where they come from. So I'll talk about equipment purchases and lease later on. Any other questions? Highway?
David Jones. I do not mean to reopen a debate about salt versus non-salt. I just had a question. I saw that line one sixty-three, salt alternatives has been like zero alignment for the past few years, which I, I hadn't noticed it because it was always in town meeting. There was a time when you said that, that there was some liquid slurry thing that mixed in the back of trucks. That just not, not to be useful or too expensive or wasn't worthwhile? Just a question, what happened there?
From the State Agency of Transportation on down throughout the municipalities and as well as drivers of their cars started to complain seriously about the slurry because it stuck to cars. Because it likes to stick to, the idea was it would stick to the road, but when it went up in the cars, it stuck to the cars, it stuck to the trucks, and they were rusting out prematurely. And that, that's too expensive to try to repair.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for highways and bridges?
Where's the mic? Just send it back across the hall.
He had his hand up, too. I have a question.
Oh, go, go.
He had a question.
Who's first?
Okay, my name's Brian Appleberry. A couple highway-related questions. Gravel, is there any plan to change the way you're approaching gravel for gravel roads? As it is now, as it is now, the, it only takes one rainstorm after it's been graded, whether it's a day after or a month after, whatever, that the road goes to potholes. And in my humble opinion, that could be changed by either paving it, which is a whole bucket of worms, or, which was done to skunk road, Skunk Hollow Road, or improving the quality of the gravel. The gravel we're using now is, is round, every part of it is round, and it rolls and moves and washes out. If you switched to a much more expensive gravel, it wouldn't have nearly as many potholes. That's my first question. Can you address that?
Well, that's a road foreman call. We are working our way, because of the municipal general, municipal roads general permit, all roads should follow best practices by twenty thirty-six, I think it is. But right now, the hydrologically connected roads have to be, you know, dealt with by twenty-twenty-five. So we've been working on hydrologically connected roads and then working on the other roads as we get to them. I mean, that is a question, I, you know, that's one of the ones I can't answer in spite of my background now in roads. But the road foreman, we get our, most of our gravel from the hybrid gravel bit because it's less expensive than trucking it from Johnson or one of the other places. But, you know, that is, you know, a question to be answered. I could, we could look that up. But it might be more expensive.
So it sounds like at the moment, you have no plan to change.
At the moment, there is not because the road, our road foreman has actually been Because our road foreman has actually been praised by AOT for the work he's doing. So we, we, we stand by it.
We could pass that on to him.
But we could pass this on to him, and we can find out.
Thank you. Second question is about ash trees. Wondering if you could clarify that. I only saw a tiny mention in the town report what the current policy is. This is really the Emerald Ash Borer, as I'm sure you're well aware. They're going to put down some cutting and turn it away. Is, what's our policy and what's, is there any plan to change the policy?
What's happening, we have a tree warden, and he's working with the conservation department. In fact, it might have been mentioned under the tree warden section of the town report. But he's, he's going to work with the conservationers, and they have to first do an ash tree inventory. And they're doing it to all the right of ways in town. And that, that takes a while. And then slowly, they will be removing ash trees because of the issue. We haven't seen, as far as I know at this point, any in Jericho, but they're all around us. Can I answer your question?
Sort of, let's see, it's hard to distinguish whenever. Just the center, center, or driving down the road between trees and being cut by the power company, the utility companies, and trees being cut by the town. Is the town cutting the ash trees so far?
What we're doing is saving money by letting the utilities, they cut on the trees first. And then, once we see what's left, then the town will go in. But that's why we're having, they have to document every single tree in the ash tree inventory to make sure. So if we let the utility companies take down what they need to, then, you know, it saves the taxpayers money, and then we take down what we need to.
And it's my understanding that folks who charge to take down trees, which most of them are more than 30 higher professionals, that the price goes way up if you put it off a long time because the trees become...
Oh, absolutely. You know, I understand.
Much more fragile when they, when they die. And it's not, they use much more expensive equipment to take them down?
Yeah, we have to depend on our tree warden inventory first. But, you know, yes, certainly, it is very well when we're at that.
Thank you.
Right behind you.
My name is Vince Canagio. I've lived on Grace Way Road for 26 years. And for 26 years, we've been band-aiding this road by just dumping more gravel on top of what's already there. And the road has lifted as much as 12 to 18 inches over those years, causing problems within our own properties like my engine, my driveway, and several other neighbors. They filled up huge puddles, and we have to pay to get them filled in. Well, last year, I decided to get a full estimate. What it would do to redo my driveway completely. And I'm faced with a $10,000 bill, but I don't want to spend that money until the road is fixed because the problem's not going to go back. It's going to just get you sick. The firm that builds up on the edge of the property water will wash it down to the driveways and not add them to the boards.
Thank you for that. I sincerely understand that, and we'll, you know, pass that on to the road foreman as he looks at what you're on the road.
Bill Olver, Skunk Hollow Drive?
I'd like to know how much the town attorney...
Hold the mic, Peter Faye.
Bill Olver, Skunk Hollow Drive? I'd like to ask the town, how much the town attorney costs on a per-hour basis?
I think it's about $400. Which is, actually, when we hired her, she was actually the least expensive, but the most qualified at the time. Because if we went with the consult, the, not necessarily the whole container, but the price went down if you did that. Attorney's are very expensive, unfortunately.
Good morning, Dan Gregor. I was wondering, is Skunk Hollow Class II, Class III road?
Class II.
Class II. Is the town, I think, I see in the last, at least since 2021, you haven't received a Class II paving grant.
Right, because the, all of those programs were stopped by the state because of the COVID emergency. So there was no, there were no Class II paving grants, there were no structures grants. And they're just starting that up again.
Right, so my question is, in the middle of all that, so they tend to give, right? If you're lucky, every two years, sometimes every three.
Every two.
On the outside, maybe every four. Do you plan on applying for Class II to help with the expenditure for Skunk Hollow? Because most of that should be eligible.
It typically is. Unfortunately, with this cycle, we were off sync. They, in terms of, they had not, how to say? The paving grants are not out there at the same time we're paving Skunk Hollow. I mean, but you're right, we will, in the future, be able to sequence it up, but probably it'll be on one of the other Class II roads. The barber farm needs work, too.
So you still plan on applying for FY24?
Absolutely.
Okay, I was going to say, it looks, it seemed like you were avoiding a very good option.
Oh, no, no, we'd never turned down a past Class II paving grant.
Right, I don't either. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions before Wayne? We're back here.
I'm bad at sitting, anyway.
This is pretty exciting, actually, with all the questions.
He's working in isolation.
Hi, Ellen.
Peter Off or Don Close?
Hi. My name's Ellen Yunker. I live in Ork Road. So this is a reflection on line, I think it's 162, about post increase 4,000 for winter sand. So this may be a kind of suggestion, but I, every spring along my road, we work very hard to get rid of the sand and gravel that is deposited on our lawns before we mow or plant flowers, whatever. I would love to have a give-back day where we can just rake it all into the road, and the town takes it back. I, it may sound silly, but there's an awful lot of sand and gravel that gets left on the sides of the roads and wrecks our lawns. But we could gladly give it back if there was such a tradition. Just to say, save money.
If those people are here enough, that's worth thinking about. I know there's one plane drive that I drive by all the time. I just wanted to give everybody, before I just briefly jump into this summer rec, which is not a whole lot. We spent a lot of energy, you know, our top priorities, safety services and highways. And we literally lost a little bit of sleep making sure that we had a highway crew that was going to be able to roll this winter. And it was tough. It was tough when it was snowing. We were hoping, okay, get out the crew. Okay, we're down two. We got one. Where are we going to put this one? You know, this one's taking a going. We got to give this one a little bit more money to do that? Top priority. So without telling a whole lot of tales, we really had to pay attention to that. So it's not as simple as, well, you know, just have them fill out an application, and we're good to go. No, it was like this constant moving target over the last six months, eight months, making sure this was staffed. You've probably read a lot about different staffing issues. We had those in the town of Jericho. And I just don't want people to go away with the impression of, you know, we just let the applications roll in and pick one. It seems like we're going to be at least money. It wasn't that simple. So we got it done. We appreciate the extra work of the highway crew, but, you know, if highway minded be job one, job one is probably police and rescue and fire. But right there, next to it, is making sure we have a highway crew that can roll and take care because people aren't going to, well, they didn't have it, we're down, and, you know, it's 11:30, and, well, they'll be here soon. No, people don't have that attitude about this whole cloud. So, anyway, just a little aside. I'm on page 14, summer rec, line 177. This is an example of what Catherine was talking about before, where on line 177 are the fees that the summer rec program gets from the parents. And then right under that, on line step 178, you'll see the expenses. It's a little different way of presenting it, but it gives a better picture at the end. You see that Lynn Wagner's been doing this forever, and there are a number of other employees, councilors, some of them kids, you know, 13, 14 years old. And you'll see the salary line there. It doesn't completely represent just Lynn, but also, you know, the $500 stipend or whatever it is for the 14-year-old, Aunt Houser or whatever. See some of the benefits down there. We had, there were 367 kid, there were 240 elementary skid kids, 127 middle school kids. So there was a total of 367 kids, almost entirely from Jericho, as I understand it. So if you look down at the bottom of that net summer rec, it will cost us in the upcoming year about $34,000 because the fees pay for most of it. So based on the $34,000, truth be told, we're probably subsidizing this program to the tune of about $100 a kid. So...
Do we get grants?
I think there are scholarships. If you go onto the website, I believe there's some kind of scholarship.
I'm sorry, Darrell Magin.
Could you say that again?
Darrell Magin.
So that's it for just that one little section. We're going to go over to Eric. Question about summer rec?
Well, it's not really about summer rec, but it's about recreation in general. I was just wondering, you know, several years ago, we did a big plan about recreation programs and what we want to have. And I feel like we don't have anything in our budget to support town recreation activities. And I feel like, you know, we have Jericho centers doing, doing things. The library district does things, the park district does things, but we don't do anything as a town, really. I'm just wondering, you know, if there's ever been conversations about what we might want to do to engage the town in some sort of recreation program?
There was a rec committee, as you probably recall. I think there were four or five people on it. Tim Ursure was, led that charge. Did we get your name?
Lynn Robbins, sorry.
Lynn Robbins. They were beginning to formulate a plan, and we even put money, I think, one year into a very part-time rec person. And, and the group went, that's the short version. But there has been an overture with Underhill about, you know, maybe we could kind of do something together. I strongly support the idea. I'm not one for wanting to expand town government. I, I believe in the Addison proverb, it used to be, I heard when I worked down there, we don't want to spend more than $0.40 on a nickel in this town. Well, I get that. But I do think the rec, having some kind of recreational coordinator, not even a program developer, but just a coordinator who could at least enumerate what's going on, I think would be a really good use of town money. We could, we'd have to spend a whole lot for it. You know, as our institutions, our community institutions fade in importance, whether, no matter what those are, 4-H, church, gun club, whatever the thing is, we want to be careful that we don't become just virtual neighbors, but actual neighbors. And having recreational opportunities, I think, without getting on my soapbox, it's not like I said it. You know, I think it might be worth spending a tiny bit of money to just create those opportunities for people to be very much hanging out with each other. So thanks, Lynn, for that sentiment. I appreciate it.
And thank you for what you were saying, too. And I wanted to just suggest that I know that ARBO funds mental health activities. You know, here we are, this is, well, recreation programs are about supporting the mental health of the citizens. And I just feel like that would be a good opportunity to kind of explore creation of some sort of program that we might want to sustain into the future.
Thank you.
Do you want to start the rec committee again?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Marka Brins. I had a question, well, actually, I had a comment first. I think the road crew did a phenomenal job this year. I was, I was a high, my father was the road commissioner for 27 years. So I certainly know, I certainly know what it's like for these guys to be on the road. And I just think they did an excellent job, being very shorthanded. I don't think they've gotten enough credit for what they have done. One of the things, going back to that, the hired equipment for the towns, now is that hired equipment, that they act, those pieces of equipment actually come with an operator with them? Or are they pieces of equipment that not only do we get that piece of equipment as like a rental thing, and one of our road crew has to run it? It is 159, yes.
A combination thereof. It's both rental equipment that we go out and rent to do a particular job, as well as if we need extra hands on some particular project, that would be hired person.
Okay, but this is not like a hired equipment person, like a professional person who wants that hired, that equipment, and you have an operator that comes with this equipment?
Yes.
It is, or it's not?
Yes, yes, yeah. When you hire, if you come, if you're going to have somebody come in with their equipment, the operator comes with it.
So it's an owner-operated piece of equipment?
Right.
Okay. They tend to be much more efficient. The other thing, as far as recreation, I think it's a great idea, unfortunately or fortunately, one another. We have a very big cross-section of ages and capabilities and things for the town of Jericho. And I think that sometimes we put the focus on a certain age bracket or a certain ability level, or like Lynn said, you know, as far as, you know, those type of things. I think that we need to look at the whole town and who actually is going to use it. And is it beneficial to put the money into something? It's got to be a handful of people to use.
Just briefly, I appreciate people paying attention to the microphones. You really do want to get intimate with the top of the microphone as, as much as you don't want to, to get good projection.
Hi, Andrea Hook. I'm on Brown Street. People are hesitant. They are, can you hear me? People are hesitant to sign up for committees. And I'm one, I'm on the line. But for the recreation, I think it might be helpful to start with just one event and get sort of the whole town involved. There's a community center years ago had a band and food trucks, and that was well-attended. So maybe if the town just organized one event and, you know, where everyone can be involved, that might be a really good start.
That's a great idea. I think that's what is happening in Underhill across from Town Hall.
Yeah, they do that.
Just swine the puffish, Kim.
Save any trouble. Peter Anderson. A few years ago, I remember being asked to be part of a survey that was being done by the town concerning recreation. It was an outside group that came in, and they were asking people, such as myself, what we thought seniors needed, what kind of recreation was needed, sidewalks, swimming pools... needed, sidewalks, swimming pools, needy places, all sorts of things. It was basically a brainstorming time to see what would be helpful for the town to pursue. And I never heard the results of that survey. I don't know whatever happened to it.
There was, I do recall, I don't know.
How could you pick your crew?
I don't know if I was on the, I don't know if I was on the select board yet, but it might have been right before. But I do remember that survey. This was at the time when there was, the rec committee was functioning. And I think there were results of that. I do remember at least one person in the committee having reservations, like, wow, there's a lot of work to be done here. And these four or five volunteers were like, how are we gonna do this? And then shortly after that, the thing evaporated. But I do recall that report, and there were some results. Some of them had big financial implications. Many of them had the time required to volunteer, to coordinate things that cost a little less money. And as many of you know, sitting in this room, those volunteer hours are decreasing rapidly. People are too busy to do that stuff. But you're right, Pastor, that was, there was a report. It did come out.
Okay. So my name is Eric Johnson. I'm the newest member of the select board and my first town meeting. So very excited to be here. I'm just gonna start on line one eighty-eight, first line on page fifteen. And this is insurances. Insurances, not much change, about two hundred dollars difference from what we budgeted last year. Not much to say about insurance. Next section is on public health and safety. And that one does have a significant increase. We were at a hundred and ninety-nine thousand last year, and we go to two thirty-one this year. And on line one ninety-one is Essex Rescue. That is an increase of thirty thousand dollars from last year. We've met with Essex Rescue several times. And I just want to add a couple of notes on what this increase was due to volunteer training costs, call volume increase, lack of Medicaid contributions. And I also want to note that any funds for capital improvement are not funded out of this request. Did you have a question on Essex Rescue?
This section, so I'll wait for your question.
We got to kill through all of them before I... Richmond Rescue is actually down a little bit. And I just want to point out, I wasn't aware of this before being on the select board, Essex Rescue covers, I believe, around three-quarters of the town, and Richmond covers around a quarter, somewhere around there. Police services also increased by about three-point-seven percent. I did want to call out that line, line one ninety-three, that hundred and forty thousand. This is not one of the sections, and maybe we should consider this next year, where we actually included the income in the section. But back on... Yeah, where's that layout? So line sixteen, license and fines. We're projecting thirty-five thousand for that. So that comes out, that comes off of that hundred and forty thousand. I think next year that we might want to lump it in there, just to make it a little more clear. Yeah. And then also, I wanted to point out, there's been a little chatter on that. That sixteen thousand of that goes towards Vermont State Police, and then the remainder goes to the Chippewa County Sheriff's Department. So overall, that section is an increase of thirty-one thousand dollars or fifteen-point-seven percent.
Okay, my name is Dave Schuler. I'm really interested in line one ninety-one, ninety-two, and one ninety-three. First of all, I'd like to commend Essex Rescue, Richmond Rescue, for having a report in the town report. I don't see anything here for Essex Rescue. I don't see anything here for Vermont State Police or for Chippewa County Sheriff. I think it's important right now that we see those details, see the reports. I'm wondering if there's a reason why. I'll refer that for you for a second. But I noticed, for instance, the police services. We, in the past, a number of years ago, talked about this, like to see the crime statistics for the town. What are the reported crimes? What are the actual prosecuted crimes? And how does it compare to statewide average? We see no reports about this. Now, we can go digging in some real deep places, but I'd like to stay a little more upfront, a little more transparency on what the town crime statistics are. To help us determine, is our numbers best placed paying the sheriff to do speed enforcement? Or might be good to have more Vermont State Police presence, looking at crime, at actual property crimes, natural crimes against people, as opposed to just speed enforcement? So there's really a question there. And the same thing with Essex Rescue. I mean, there's a big difference there. I don't know, to be honest, if it's really warranted or not. I don't have enough information. There's nothing in here. Unless I called up, maybe you got something, I don't know. Unless I found a select board meeting and asked, maybe I got something, I don't know. I really don't have a way I can ascertain if this is correct or not, other than you're safe. And I'm not saying you're wrong, but I'm just saying I don't have the informed information to go make that decision myself. And my comment about the lack of reports, I have to say now, just for the future, in the non-mandated sections, many of those groups not have reports in here either. Again, it's hard to understand when an increase is being requested, is it really valid? Is the group even helping or not? And some groups that aren't even in here do have reports, but these groups, especially when they're on increases, are not represented today.
Okay. So I'm, sorry, I'm trying to remember all the questions in the right order. Sounds like the main thing was to get more transparency into the town report. And I don't disagree with that. Another question was on the fines, and what are they from, or more on what we're spending that bond force of funding on, perhaps?
Crime statistics, which include the fines as well as the actual criminal prosecutions that occurs for this town.
So I believe, and maybe Catherine can help.
How many shootings have we had? How many robberies have we had? How many personal assaults have we had? I'd like to know that information itself.
Crimes.
Periodically, we do have the state police, you know, every once in a while, they'll come in and talk about that. But the funding that you're seeing here is not for crime. The state police always handles the crime for the town, no matter what. This is, the state police gives up to ten hours per week. And they're...
If they have the staff.
If they have the staff, because it's all overtime. And this is actually for speeding. We started out with a smaller number of hours per, to the sheriff, and it also has to do with the traffic. And over the years, more and more people talk about the speeding. We still have people come in and talk about the speeding and the issues with traffic. And so over the years, the sheriff's department has been increased to forty hours per week. But they are significantly less per hour than the state police are, which is why, over time, that relationship shifted, plus the state police has less and less opportunity to use them. But if there is a crime, the state police will come. And we certainly can ask the state police to come in and, you know, it's been a couple of years since they actually have come in and talked about the crime. But the last time they did, there isn't that much in Jericho in terms of that kind of problem, fortunately.
It's above zero, right?
Yeah, probably. I mean, because back then, there was, unfortunately, a family whose son was into drugs, and that caused a lot of problems. I had that.
Really good point though.
So we can have more come in.
That is, Peter Booth. This might be true. I wanted to kind of echo what Dave said. I find that a lot of times if somebody has, for example, their car broken into, and they hop on Front Porch Forum and post something about that, and somebody else says, yeah, that happened to me too, and you ask me too, you get the sense that, oh my God, there's a crime spree because four people over the course of two months had their car broken into. But when you kind of, Front Porch Forum often amplifies voices, and it can make, give you a sense of like, oh, wow, things are in hell, hell in handbasket. I think they're having concrete data to say like, actually, there were this many different types of events would be, and track that over time would give people a sense of what is actually happening in terms of crime and drug use and that sort of thing in our town. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Nancy Williams. I live on Snye Island Road. I, first of all, I really want to commend all the rescue services that support our town. I don't think that they always give the accolades that they should. And I just really wanted to mention that I really appreciate the services that they all provide. I'm not understanding why we're giving less money to Richmond. They serve a significant portion of the town. And to reduce that funding by any monies to me seems, doesn't make any sense to me. So I would like to get some clarification on that.
This is the request they asked for. We grant to the request. I don't know why they asked for less.
Their costs went down.
Their costs went, their costs actually went down.
I think we should pay them more.
I will note that I believe John or Colin, they have to correct me, per person covered, both Essex and Richmond are now pretty close, if not exactly the same, per person. Sir?
Todd Fisher. Like to echo her thoughts of the demand.
Todd, we really got to do this microphone thing. I'm sorry. Meeting of poor recording secretary. That's all I got to say.
As the demand of the massive response adds, the cost of living continues to go up, I also don't agree with the twenty-two percent decrease in the budget. I would like to see us move the line back to eighteen thousand dollars and support that on the budget.
I hear you. We granted the request they asked for. It's not really something that we typically do with arguing with someone that they've asked for too little. But it is certainly something we could talk to them about in the future. Because I echo with the important service it provides.
You can see from looking at the Essex line, when they said jump, we said, how high? So if Richmond had a need for twenty thousand dollars, we probably would have paid it because, you know, it's one of the most important services. So I agree with the sentiment. You know, this is, but that's what they asked for, and we were happy to comply with their request.
Point of order, Mr. Oderick. Could you clarify whether he is proposing, whether Todd is proposing an amendment?
All right. Since you brought that up, let me address that. The citizen has the privilege of making an emotional amendment budget at this point. So, and two people have spoken roughly in that direction. But at this point, the citizens have to think about the reaction of the select board and decide whether to make that amendment. So it's certainly appropriate to make amendment at this point. The question is whether the citizens believe that it's the right thing to do.
I'm your town health officer. I also served with Richmond Rescue for ten years. I'd like people to please read this week's issue of Seven Days. There is a spread of six pages on the increasing need for support of rescue services throughout the state and the country because there's a significant decrease in volunteers and there's a significant increase in experience.
Okay, we're good to move on. Public health and safety, fifteen percent increase there. Next, we go into the section of building and property maintenance. Not a lot different there. Line one ninety-nine, Jericho Graves, that contract is expected to increase by twenty-three hundred dollars. That's the main difference in that whole section, only three-point-three percent difference there. Character conservation and public use, line two oh six, conservation commission, increased of two thousand dollars. Line two oh seven and two oh eight, land improvements and mob, farm land improvements have been combined in the overall net increase of five thousand dollars, including footbridge maintenance. Overall, this budget did increase by forty percent or seventy thousand dollars. We also have tried to break things out a little bit better into their respective lines, because some of the committees were getting kind of lumped together and not really appropriately split apart. And the different trails of mobs and the conservation were kind of working off of one lump sum, and that ended up confusing for them. So we're trying to work on keeping that, keeping that separate and clear as best we can. Town Center Library starts on two eleven. Salary and benefits there increased by twelve percent. Not too much else there, overall eight-point-one percent.
Elizabeth Bernstein. I'd like to speak to the town center library. I noticed that she had line items for building maintenance, which is lovely. There's a very cold and drafty building, and that is being improved. I would like to observe that we have had, I think, four librarians in the last about six years. I could be off a quarter of magnitude, but we've had, we've lost a lot of librarians. And when I last used the library, which was , yesterday, uh, yesterday, excuse me, I asked Gretchen, why can't, why are you leaving? You're a wonderful librarian. You do terrific programming. You're very helpful with books. You do all the things that a librarian should do and even more. Why are you leaving? And she said, because they're, because of the salary and the benefits. I wanted this to be a full-time job. I hoped it would be increased to a full-time job. And it's not. I don't, I would much prefer that we pay people to take full-time positions where we want them. And the buildings are, for me, buildings are less important than people. We need a full-time librarian. Gretchen is a wonderful librarian. And I'm very sorry to see her go. And if you don't increase the salary, we're gonna keep having half-time librarians, a new one every year. And I think that's a terrible waste of resources. So I would like to move that we increase the town librarian's salary to full-time.
Nate, the name was a secretary?
Kyle Magida.
I'll go around.
Kyle Booth? Magida. M-A-G-I-D-A.
I wish that I had a recording secretary over here so I could ask her, did you get that? Okay, we have an emotional amendment budget. We now can talk about this amendment. You are welcome to discuss it on the floor, good people.
Peter Booth?
As someone who does not use the Jericho Town Library, just because of where I live, I don't have information on what the, how much STE we have at the Jericho Town Library. And I don't mean this as critical, this is a genuine curiosity. What is the, what is the need for a full-time, besides, I understand the difficulty of constant turnover, which is certainly something... turnover, which is certainly something that we want to figure out a way to get around. If we hire a full-time, is there going to be some, is Gretchen, sounds like her name is, is going to be twiddling her thumbs for another quarter of an FTE? Is there information on that position, what it entails, and what making it full-time would mean? Thank you.
Further discussion of the amendment to make the town librarian's salary full-time.
We have two libraries. Why can't we combine them? You just have one. You're going to put a lot of money into a building that's old. You would save a lot of money there, and you would save a lot of money on extra libraries, librarians.
What does the $63,000 cover now? Is it part-time, full-time? I mean, 63 is quite a number.
Is it 63,000 for one person and benefits?
It is a projection of 63. That does include an increase in both hours and salary from a few years ago, certainly an increase in salary from this last year. I don't remember exactly when the hours increased, but they did, they did increase to 32.
Do we know the breakdown of what salary and what benefits?
I don't know that I have that here. It does include another librarian, but that is a very small number of hours, I think maybe three or four hours. So it is mostly.
Well, it seems like a lot, whatever.
Hi, my name's John Abbott. I'm the town administrator. The salary for the 32-hour-a-week position that exists currently is in the neighborhood of $41,000 annually.
Which is a very recent increase.
Right. Due to the increase in the cost by the library board.
I'm Meg Tivore. I live in the center. I know Gretchen's right out in the hallway. We have questions that perhaps she could answer. I have this wonderful feeling of vitality when I know the library is open, and it's an internet hub and between and the central country store, I feel like it keeps the center vibrant. When it's not open, there's something missing.
Good morning. My name is Tracy Wright. I'm from Christie Lane. I don't know. I guess it's just a, a, a. Yep, sorry. Any parents have napkins? Yeah, what do you got, folks? Thank you so much. I'll take care of that. I'm so sorry. My name is Tracy Wright. I'm from Christie Lane. Am I, sort of a point of order, I guess. I think what I heard, the amendment, is to increase a salary to a full-time salary, but I think the article itself is a, is a, is a number that we're voting on. So should, should the, how actionable is this amendment, is this resolution?
Right. So the interesting thing is that rubbish rules of order don't actually militate or orchestrate sound behavior. That's actually your responsibility. And just a little guidance here, I think you are pointing in the right direction. It seems like since this is a budget item, that amount, an amount of money has to be figured out. It would be wise for the citizens to know that number in voting on this motion, and in the absence of the number, they might want to consider how they would perceive if there were no number, and yet the amendment were on the floor. To see that, in fact, there doesn't have to be a number, but this is the budget, so that amendment doesn't make sense, and you would vote accordingly, right?
I can give you a number in a few minutes. I haven't given, maybe this, this will answer my question, but more, is there anyone, I know there's a Jericho Town Library, maybe, is there anyone here who can speak to what, where this came from, and if there is actual demand or need for, for a condition? As, as on a personal level, it'd be great to have more library access, but I, that's from one person who's quite used to the internet, and since it's good at all the time, but has there actually been, is anyone to me here speak to the decisions around how long a building needs, the time for that would be great.
I think there's someone out in the hallway in the library room that could speak to it. I think the reporter is here. I know she's.
Hey, David Jones. I just, I don't use the library, but I think it's very important to the community, so I don't sort of occupy personally, but I do as a community. And what I, what I hear is it's really hard to make some of these decisions because we have the salary there, benefits, we're supposed to 32-hour position. Catherine, you made a comment briefly, there's another librarian that's three to four hours. Is that included in this? If it is, we're already up to like 36 hours. The difference in cost to get to 40, which I suppose what you call full-time, is, is a very small amount, so getting a handle on that amount would make it easier for the citizens to decide. At one point, if we're talking 50%, we're like doubling this, and maybe a very small fraction would be very easy for people to consider that version. So getting a handle on the actual numbers would be really helpful.
Sure. So for the current salary, if we just go by hourly, and we change, were to change that from 32 to 40, that would go just salary from, what'd you say the first number was?
41.
So it'd be about $10,000. So it'd go to 51,250. The challenge comes from, the town has a very generous benefits package, and the full-time compared to the part-time, I don't have that number at the top of my head, but I'm sure there are people in here that do, that, that changes it up more than, more than just the salary piece of it, right? That, that adds a lot of cost to the town.
But Catherine said there's already another three to four hours of another library, and it sounds like it's on top of that 32, which is included in that amount, so.
One thing I'd like, if someone from the board could answer, I don't know if that three to four hours extends the library opening time, or if there's just some time where they're both there. I actually don't know the answer to that, but it's, I don't know that we can just assume that it's 32 plus three, that it's currently.
Okay, that'd be very helpful. What's that?
Could I, this is your town moderator speaking. This is just the kind of time-eating discussion that I think it might be wise to avoid. It might, this is just a bit of advice, and you can tell me to shut up. There's a lot of information here that people are trying to gather, which ordinarily people would do as homework, and then present to this group. I suggest, Elizabeth, I believe you started the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. It might be that you, like, my advice is that you withdraw the amendment and substitute amendment which charges the town with review of that salary with the object of sustaining librarian quality in the town, something of that sort. It's a lot more amorphous, but we're not, we're not in a position to have the information available quickly to do this unless somebody can tell me I'm wrong. And I welcome opinions on that, judgment of the, of the moderator. Any thoughts?
I agree. Since you've asked me to, I'm kind of landlocked here.
No, the microphone's coming your way.
Thanks.
Go loud.
Oh, I never do. Since you have asked me to withdraw the motion, let me tell you.
I didn't, I, I, I.
You have suggested.
I advised it.
You advised. And I take your suggestions and your advisements very seriously, and I was aware that this would sort of be a road salt issue. But I wanted to stop the conversation, to have people focus on this. I do want you to know that in my conversation with Jeff Gretchen, she said this had gone back to the select board, and they had rejected the request for an increase. I think you're absolutely right. This is not the time to talk about minutia, but now we know, and I would like to put pressure on the select board to consider making this a full-time position because of the revolving door of librarians is not good for the quality of the library, nor, as one of the last speakers said, for the quality of the town. To have a library open is, is very good for Jericho Center. So taking that all under advisement, I will withdraw my motion. Oh, I'm getting the sneege eye from Chris Sims. How about if I, I will likely withdraw it after these people speak. Does that, does that satisfy your party?
Yeah, okay. We got, we got a line up here. Let's hear all of them.
Let's hear from them, and then I will withdraw the motion. Plan that I speak next to her.
Thank you. Elizabeth King again. I would just like to say that I think it is very important to avoid the habit that many organizations are in of not increasing jobs to full-time so that benefits don't have to be paid. I think that is a really dangerous thing to do, especially as part of that generation of folks who get caught by this habit over and over. Thank you.
Chris Sims. I'm old enough to be Elizabeth's mother, and so as a mother of millennials, I can echo that it's really, really hard for younger people to get work and stay here in town because there's that, we don't want to pay you full-time because then we don't pay benefits. So I am in support of having a full-time librarian at the Jericho Center Library with benefits. I don't use that library much myself because the collection is small, but I, I value that space as a community meeting space and all the programs that they have there, which to me outbalances the smaller collection. So I would also support keeping that library open, even though that library is a community space.
Thank you. One point of clarification I would like to make, I, I do want you to understand that the current position as part-time, she is eligible for benefits. There is just a different proration based on it being part-time versus full-time. It's not that she, she or anyone in that position doesn't have benefits, it's just a different proration.
So is there any way to quickly figure out that change so we can come up with a number, or are we, so the answer's no?
Go ahead.
I'm Jeff York. I'm the treasurer for the board for the Jericho Town Library. The actual salary portion of this is calculated by the town. I just want to answer a couple of questions. The board did do a survey of all the other librarians in the community as part of this retention effort, and we brought that to the select board. We do pay significantly less than every other library around. We knew this was a retention issue, and we had, had been seeking a larger increase for this, for this position. Position is 32 hours now. About four hours of that are administrative, and the rest is at the library. We do feel that there is work available to keeping the library open. If this were to be made a full-time position, it certainly would be utilized. Thank you very much.
I know you, I know you guys were waiting for me to say something. I, I think we've got an opportunity for some. Oh, Jim Carroll. I lived on Boldrick Hill Road when I left this morning. I think this is an opportunity for what I would call enlightened sustainability and looking at global warming. Have I touched enough faces? That today, with HDMI resolution and video, artificial intelligence, and all of the things that are benefiting us in terms of work, we watched during COVID where people were working from home. I think this job and the presence of this entity in Jericho Centers, some of its qualitative aspects are lost on us when we start talking about money. The kids getting off that school bus, the kids feeling comfortable in that community, that formation at the early age of connection to the community, to their peers, and being able to read and learn how to get other people's ideas and think, that's what keeps kids away from drugs, away from crime, away from domestic violence. If we don't form and think of these qualitative characteristics as something within our community, now we're talking about benefits and money and so forth. The reality is Jericho can adopt technology to do job share. We have a very intelligent person, very well-educated, self-motivated, willing to work, who needs to be present in a space, but that doesn't mean it's the only work that she can do. We've been searching Jericho for at least a year and a half for files that are very important to discussions. A librarian is a person who knows how to take intelligent documents, store them, and then be able to create retrieval. So I think we have a human resource asset, and in every business that I've ever worked in, which isn't anything, when we find a gifted, talented, willing-to-work human being, we do just about anything to preserve and protect that position, to avoid the loss of their skills, the loss of their motivation, and show that to other employees that we care about our human resources, and that we, as employers, are willing to work with them as they grow, and we grow with them. So I think the select board could say, hey, maybe there's a way that we can balance workload, job share, use technology, and at the same time achieve all of these things and not continue to lose these high-quality people. I think of our planners and our zoners and all the other people that we've lost because we didn't have that adaptability and flexibility. So as a town, I think we should take a more creative way of looking at the work we do and not necessarily button-holding and siloing it, but saying, hey, this is a really valuable person. Maybe she could even drive a snowboard.
My name's Brian Appleberry. I like to put in my two cents for increasing the budget to enable full-time librarian. And I want to point out, I missed it, my way out in the hall and talked to the current librarian, that the, that you're not just voting for books. that the, if you're not just voting for books, then people with, who have children currently, um, young, um, under 18 years of age will say, know that, uh, the country and world has changed a lot, and we're talking about childcare, and we're talking about, um, recreation, which has been addressed, um, in here already. We, we've heard a lot of people supporting, increasing, uh, support for term-long recreational activities. And boy, you, you could look at the news every day and you just almost can hear something about the childcare crisis. So the librarians, including the Jericho Town Library librarians, do an enormous job in providing childcare, not under the strict, but overall, um, parents and children spending time together and doing recreational activities and educational activities has an enormous amount to do with how much the town library is altered. I personally use both libraries, the Rossel Library and the Jericho Town Library, and I think they're both wonderful. The town library is unique, in my opinion, all the libraries that I've been in in the world. Um, it's a special library, and it has many purposes. This is, I don't have this in writing, but the current librarian confirmed what you two were saying up there, that she's currently paid for 32 hours a week and that, um, that that includes that she also gets benefits, as you said. Um, so I hope you've come up with a number. I would suggest, um, I know you have an amendment on the floor, but I, I would propose a friendly amendment to increase item, line item 211, um, from $63,000 to, uh, $77,000, which is a 25% increase, aiming at increasing it from 32 hours to 40. So, uh, if I may, uh, insert myself once again. Thank you. I have discovered that the Select Board is receptive to that kind of solution. Is that fair to say?
I have a, I have a question, sorry, just order.
Yeah, we, well, at this point, I, what I'm going to try to orchestrate is a modification to the amendment. That has a number. That's my goal.
That was my question. Can we vote on that as just a modification outside of the actual budget vote? Or do you?
No, this, the, what's on the floor is the budget. So it's change the budget or not. That's all we're doing right now.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, I, if I'm, if I'm not speaking correctly, I'm just going to repeat what I just said. The Select Board is receptive to an alteration of this amendment. Remember, it's just an amendment. So far, it's on the floor for discussion. It's not a decision. That's your job. But for the moment, what it looks like to get to where we want to go, which is to name a number, it looks like, uh, the Select Board is receptive to a number along the lines that, um, you suggest. I, it might be that you set a number and that the amendment include language like "up to", you know, in order to bring to full-time. Now, I, I, it's not my business to write the language of the amendments.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Um, Elizabeth Bernstein. I, I thought I heard the, uh, previous speaker say that he proposed, uh, an addition of $15,000, up to $15,000, uh, to make that position full-time. Um, did I hear that correctly?
He actually said $77,000.
Uh, 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 an addition of $15,000 to $70, or oh.
I know it's $14,000.
Yeah, it was framed as a, as a total.
Okay, $77,000.
Right.
And, uh, since I had made a motion, but I don't know if it was accepted. Uh, I would be happy.
It was.
Oh, it was. I'd be happy to accept that as a friendly amendment.
I, I don't do friendly amendments.
You do, you don't.
There's no such thing, just, just say no. So, I suggest you make a substitute motion which uses that language. Just stand up, say, "I would propose to substitute the following amendment for my, for the amendment that has been so far discussed." And you guys maybe even get together and talk about the language, but something about that number and "up to" and the purposes to increase the librarian at full-time, all that's got to be in this amendment as reframed. That's where you want to take it.
I so moved.
That is a moderator's dream come true.
Is there a second?
Now, wait a minute. The secondor of the original amendment has to agree to the substitute. Is that person still here?
Yes and yes. Yes, I'm there, yes, I heard. I'll.
Okay, okay. So I, I'm going to take a shot here. There, there is a substitute an motion, a motion. Substitute amendment, uh, that's been presented, uh, which is to say that the budget be increased by up to $77,000 with.
Replace with?
$14,000.
Ah, damn it. I haven't got this right. What line are we on?
211.
That, okay, the substantive amendment is that line 211, salaries and benefits be increased to, to, up to, to up to $77,000 with the goal of providing a full-time salary and benefits to the librarian at the town library.
Yes.
Yes.
All good?
Yes.
And the secondor agrees?
Agreed.
So the substitute amendment is on the floor. Uh, may I say that there's been a lot of discussion about the value of doing this and very little about concerns about not doing it. I, in the, in the interest of having this town government work, I encourage people who are not comfortable with this idea to speak up at this point. And I, I'd like to have those people show up before we have more people saying what a wonderful idea it is.
Perhaps it is a wonderful idea.
That's up to you to decide, people. I just work here.
How much do you get paid?
Uh, well, I got free coffee this morning. No, you might have to pay for the coffee.
Hi, Martha Prince. I don't think there's enough information here in the broad, most respectable people is that how much the library is used and to what benefit or who actually benefits. I think that we need to be wise people ahead and try to get into the majority of people that come in now at that door and find out actually what the use is or what the age group is or, um, whatever. And frankly, for $77,000, I think you ought to go back to the road crew and say, you know what, boys, you need rates. Um, I think that when you go ahead and you start looking at a library and has a set, or anybody who has a set office hours, they go in where it's nice and warm and toasty, and they don't get calls at 2:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the morning, and they're getting paid more than a road crew guys are. I, I just don't think that that, to me, it does not seem fair.
Hi, I'm Linda Porter. I'm Emma trustee at the library, so I am prejudiced. But I would, uh, like to piggyback on what Jeff said. Uh, we did, um, do a survey of all the libraries in Chittenden County. Our librarian is paid the least. All the other librarians, whether they're part-time or full-time, had full benefits, not prorated. So I just want to point out that, that, um, Brechen does a wonderful job for less money than any other librarian in Chittenden County.
Hey, Dave Schuler. I have a question about her, like, is she an employee of the town specifically? Yes.
Well, she's not exactly that black and white. She's an employee of the town, but the town center library has its own board that oversees her duties, if you will.
Okay, I think my question is still, still hurting her. So she's .8 right now, .8 FTE acquaintance. Uh, as an employee of the greater town, uh, do we have a .2 FTE equivalent job in other offices that could take advantage of her skills? As we said, Jim Carroll really made me realize what was he was talking. Uh, she has skills, yeah, records retention, records recall, things like that. Are there other offices that could basically employ her from .2 FTE, make a full-time job with duties in, you know, four days a week in one place or one in another, where hours split appropriately, to achieve the effect, help her becoming a full-time employee, to retain her, but yet also not necessarily extend the library at the extensive other areas?
With apologies as needed, that's not what this amendment's about.
Well, it's, it provides, I think, a question for people to say if they vote for or against this.
Right. If they like the idea, they should vote against this amendment.
Correct, or they believe it's a safe possibility.
I would like to request the Jericho Library Board to help me confirm, um, an understanding that I had as a Select Board, that the comparison study that you did was to other library directors, not other librarians. Could I get that confirmation from either you, Jeff, or Linda, please?
Linda, Ben, if you looked at the description, the job description that you agreed to with our prior librarian and with Brechen, the language reads "library director".
So yes, that was a comparison of other library directors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody want to call the question?
Call the question, Tracy Wright.
Is there any objection to voting on this issue at this point? So, uh, you know, I'd be a little rusty on this, but this is, this begins as an oral vote, and I judge the ayes and the nays and the abstains. And if you don't like it, you can object. And then we go to a count of hands. Um, so all those in favor of the amendment, uh, which is, oh, help me. Um, to increase the, uh, salaries budget for the town library to as much as $77,000 with the object of providing a full-time employment and benefits for the library director. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Uh, same?
Same.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, the amendment passes.
Okay, you may notice a misprint on line 211. That's supposed to read $77.
Sense of humor.
Sorry. Uh, Tracy Wright, Kristy Wang, and I'm not well-keeping when I stand up here. My apologies to the school. Um, just, just as a clarification, I did notice in working through the, um, report that the town center librarian on line item 211, salaries and benefits is listed together, where all of the other positions above that are all separated out. And I'm just curious if there's a reason for that or there's not a reason for that. You know, maybe I could, need to look into that this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Captain Wayne will be doing, uh, town center library next year. Um, I'm going to move on to, appropriations mandated, um, overall increase there is 80%. Any questions on mandated? Okay. Uh, non-mandated starts on line 219, and it goes to 239. And there are really no significant changes here. Um, total not, about 5.4% increase, about $5,000.
I noticed on page 50, oh, sorry, William Wright, Kristy Wang. Um, I noticed on page 50, there's a list of mandated. Can you back up to the mandated list, please? There's a list of, uh, I'm back to last one. No, I was with the, uh, line, uh, number Rossel Library is listed on page 50 as a mandated, but it's not here under appropriations mandated. It's down below in a weird category of the lineup. I was curious.
I will talk about that as we, because it's in a different section.
Are we, are we on non-mandated or mandated?
We're, they finished, Eric finished all that. Unless you have a question.
I want to make a comment.
Thank you.
You can do it. You can do it.
I'm Sonia Skyler, and I'm Jericho's representative to the Winuski Valley Park District. And in answer to the question of the person who asked for more information before, I don't know why the Park District and report was not included in the town, um, booklet. However, copies of it are available at the table for, that has the Winuski Valley Park District information.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for doing that, too.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
All right, now if we go to line 240.
Line 16.
Line 16. Uh, this is, even though there's nothing on there for budget, FY23 and FY24, this is, uh, how we're breaking out, uh, the purchase of heavy equipment and how the, how we're paying for it all together so that you're not back and forth between revenue and, 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 um, the, the cost of them. And, but the reason there is no heavy equipment for FY23 and FY24 is because there's such a backup of, um, how long it takes to get a truck. There is a truck pre-ordered, but you're not probably going to see it until 2025. I can replace one of those. The, uh, we also have capital improvements starting on line 242. Uh, we have sidewalk construction and sidewalk grants. That way you see what the actual full cost is, and you, it becomes $120,000 or so. But again, it is not in FY24 because no construction grants are extended anticipating FY24. Debt service, we now have, uh, put all the, uh, the loans from the trucks as well as the bond vote for the, uh, improvements at the town hall all into one so you can see the full interest payments that we do make on these notes. And then the principal payments are line 247 for a total of $173,244, uh, for our debt, total debt service. This year, we're not anticipating any, um, transfers, uh, other than, uh, from, from reserve funds other than the road impact fees. And, uh, the $50,000, uh, is what we will, from road impact is what we'll use to actually help with the, the cost of the, the road, uh, work that we do. The transfers to reserve funds, the only one that's going to be active is at line 262, and that's the reappraisal fund. And you'll see that it has doubled. And that's because we need to increase funding for reappraisal in the future, within the next, uh, three years. because we need to increase funding for reappraisal in the future, within the next three years or so. And that's because everybody is coming up to the same issue with having reappraisals at the same time. And so we're going to transfer then thirty-six, thirty-five thousand to the reserve fund, for net reserve fund activity of ten thousand dollars, because you're taking fifty out or putting thirty-five in. Our total expenditures then come down to three, three million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Now this is where the question of the Deborah Rossin comes out. It is its own municipality, they vote on their own budget, and then we just put it in our budget because that's our sixty-two percent share. We also do the same thing for the Underhill Jericho Fire Department, because all these items in this section are shown separately on your tax bill and reflect the taxes collected, and then passed to the fire department, the Deborah Rossin. And then the old red mill and the conservation reserve fund are, motions that had passed in prior year budgets, and there are certain millage on the tax rate, varies, point zero zero five or something like that, that's a reserve fund, we can't remember. And the millage was set to come up to about eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars for the old red mill for the next ten years. But it will change slightly because it is a mill on the tax rate as opposed to just eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. And so our total collections are going to be seven hundred and thirty-five, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars, and our remittances are the same. And so this, this ends the discussion of the budget unless there are other questions, and so we can move forward to the next page.
I hate to bring it back up, but probably does mean the budget changed a little bit.
Right, it does. He tells the, yeah, that's what Dave does, if he always does it and then tells you, like, that's going to be.
Great, great work.
Ladies and gentlemen, if there are no other changes to the budget, are you ready to vote on the motion?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to read back the Article One as warrant with modification. This is an increase of fourteen thousand dollars, taking the librarian's salaries line for the Town Library from sixty-three to seventy-seven, and I will incorporate that into the modifying motion. Article one reads, shall the voters approve the proposed fiscal year ending 2024 budget of three million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, including spending unanticipated funds such as state and federal grants and gifts? All those in favor of approving Article One, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, nay. And those of saying, so say. The budget passes as amended. All right, moving right along, break next to you, I hope you keep up. And his article two, shall the voters appropriate five hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars of the total eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars under Hill Jericho Fire Department budget to the department for the purpose of providing fire protection, suppression, emergency response services, and certified first response services in the community, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week during fiscal year 2024. What do you wish to do with Article Two?
I approve Article Two.
And you would be?
Peter Booth.
And we have a second for Article Two.
I will begin now, my second.
And is there any discussion or presentation related to this?
Yes, I will start this. Article, to the legend of preparation of the Underhill Jericho Fire Department fiscal year twenty-four, select board member Wayne Howe and town administrator John Abbott met with their Underhill Crime Department Chief Matt Chaplin and his assistant chiefs to discuss the proposed budget. Then both full-town select boards met in joint session to hear the presentation and discuss the final budget prior to voting to accept the UJ FTE budget for 2024. The budget is on page fifty-four, and Chief Matt Chaplin will now address the budget by Article Two.
Good morning. Are there any questions on a specific part of our budget request? You're in the taxpayer's pocket. I'm working.
I think it's that same one, I think it was just further down there.
Yeah. There you go. All right, so just a brief update before, since there are no questions. I think the biggest change in the budget this year is, in previous years, we have not had two full-time staff that we've always budgeted for, so we put that money unspent on salaries and benefits into a reserve line. In previous years, we've been able to pull that reserve line back in to offset the request from the taxpayers, the actual cash from the taxpayer, because you paid it in previous year. We now have been able to retain two full-time staff, we still have two full-time staff, so we are not able to roll that back. We don't have that money anymore in the reserve account to roll it back in. So year to year, the dollar number, the budget increase is eleven percent, the dollar number from the town is higher than that because we don't have the reserve funds. We're subject to inflation, just like everybody else. We have increased our firefighter salaries this year, both full-time and the volunteer staff, in an attempt to specifically for our, for our full-time staff on retention. Benefit costs have gone up, fuel has gone up, insurance has gone up, utilities have gone up, and we try to do our very best to control costs wherever we can and stay within our budget. That is our full intent to do that again this year. One note on the communication line item, our communication budget was for a little over five hundred calls, five hundred and fifteen to be exact, and we had five hundred and eighty-eight calls last year. We're on pace this year already to break that number again. So we may struggle with the communication line item, but we'll figure that piece out through various combinations and reserve funds to cover what we need to do there. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Phil Newbeck, I would like to know what is the status of the transfer of the Rivers property to the town?
The Rivers property is still currently under Act two fifty, and if you don't know what that means, that means that if we even write a letter to the town to say we want to do something with it, whoever we're going to do it with is going to be locked into Act two fifty forever, because you can only close Act two fifty on gravel pin, which is what we're trying to do. To do that, we need some more grass to grow. We're in the process of working with the solar company, who is helping us with that. We hope to be able to accomplish that this summer. We will then sell the house to the tenants that are living in the house, that is the plan, and then beyond that, we're going to sit back down with the town and talk about what do we want to do with the rest of the Rivers property.
Tracy Bright, Christie, Tracy Bright, Christie Lane, if you could just address the increase in accounting, that's line eleven, is one of my questions for you, and then I do see on line thirty-six, the new capital purchases, just talk to that sixty thousand that we purchased.
Yes, so line eleven accounting, if you notice, there's nothing on twelve and thirteen. We transitioned auditors this year to a new auditing company, and if you add the numbers up, it's the same thing. If you dig previous year, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and compare it to this year, the numbers, it's actually a thousand dollars left. So we just combined those three items at the one line item at the request of our auditing firm. Capital purchases, I wonder if I have some information, hold on. So in our capital plan, we have ordered, similar to the town, with a long lead time on the trucks, we have ordered two replacement trucks. Those trucks will be, those two will be replacing three, so we will actually drop our number of apparatus by one. In doing so, the capital plan also includes purchase of our bunker gear, our PPE for fighting fires. Every three years, we buy sets of those, those have a ten-year lifespan per NFPA, and so we buy nine to ten sets every three years, and roll people through to make sure that their PPE is current. In the capital plan is also radios, thermal imaging cameras, SCVAs, all those sorts of things. We always try for grants on those items, whenever we can, we apply for the Fire Act human grants every year, we have applied for the Homeland Security Act grants every year, that there are things that we are eligible for. So the sixty thousand dollars in the current budget is paying debt for previous equipment purchases and apparatus purchases, and we're in the process of buying two new apparatus this year, which we don't expect to get until next year.
When the firemen go out on the call, are they paid at any particular rate?
Yes, and this budget does include, so the question was, do the volunteers get paid when they go out on a call? And the answer is yes, both our firefighters and our EMTs are paid to go out on a call, and this budget does include an increase to fifteen dollars per hour with a one-hour minimum for that same.
Peter Anderson, I was surprised to hear the other day that firefighters have a ten percent higher risk of cancer, and therefore they are doing cancer screenings before firefighters are hired. How does that work with volunteer firemen?
So we have a, per OSHA, we, OSHA, we have a, we use Champlain Medical, we use the doctor at Champlain Medical, and all of our firefighters, EMTs, do have a pre-volunteer physical that includes cancer questions, and then through that same doctor, we have annual physicals. Some people are annual, when you get older like me, you have an annual physical, if you're a younger firefighter, that's based on some periodicity based upon your health, and the doctor determines your periodicity of physicals, and those include cancer screenings. Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Geez, I don't know, you go off easy this one. Are you ready to vote on Article Two?
Yes.
All right, here we go. Shall the voters appropriate five hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars of the total eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seventy-nine thirty dollars your Underhill Jericho Fire Department budget to the department for the purpose of providing fire protection, suppression, emergency response services, and certified first response services in the community, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week during fiscal year 2024? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? And abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, at this point, I'm going to pull a moderator move, and I'd like to, I'd like to ask if there's any objection to combining the next three motions, which are routine, enabling the town to do business, and if there is, it's fine, I'll just, I'll take them up. If anybody wants to talk about any one of these individually, I'll simply, simply proceed, but if there's no interest at all in clarification for any of these, I will combine them, so I await your pleasure. Is there interest in discussion of any of them? Hearing absolute silence, I'm going to combine. Are you ready to vote on the next three motions?
Yes.
I am obliged to read them. The motion's read Article Three, is shall the town authorize the select board to borrow money for the temporary needs of the town? Article Four, shall the town collect its taxes by its treasurer in accordance with thirty-two VSA, section forty-seven ninety-one? And Article Five, shall the town collect its taxes equal install through the town offices on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, with postmarks acceptable? I realize that I need a motion to put these on the floor, may I have that?
So move, back to Chaplin.
And a second.
Second, Peter Booth.
All right, sorry for the irregularity, I'll go back to training school. All those in favor of these combined motions, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? May pass your names. Now move on to, now move on to the exemption from property taxation, and I will take these individually, just to be sure. So Article Six, shall the town exempt from property taxation the lands and premises known as the Jericho Center Preservation Association, which consists of zero point three five acres with a community center building, BTE, thirty-two nine X, and one point seventy-seven acres, more or less, BTE, thirty-three X, recreational acreage in Jericho Center for a period of five years? What do you wish to do with Article Six? This is one I need your help with.
So move, Terry Booth.
Seconded, Elizabeth King.
I love it. Do we have some insight into this request? I guess so, you know, yeah, go ahead.
Tracy Bright, Christie Lane, just point of information, really more than anything, can you, select board, can you walk me through how or why these next three properties are on this list, and what is the process that an entity goes about getting, requesting exemption from property taxes in this town?
You got their stock up here.
These are legacy articles.
Yeah, these are legacy articles. I mean, these items have had property taxation exemption for, for years, and I think it had to do with, I think, why, every...
Eight years, five or so, voting again.
Yeah, and every five years, you have to renew it. Do you have any other background you want us to share?
Terry, I'll try, these things come up periodically, and I think common thread with the Jericho, Jericho Center Preservation Association, which board I was on for a number of years, I'm not, I'm not speaking of the hat.
Get closer.
But it's a culture.
Yes.
But it's, you know, it's an organization that is perceived to provide considerable benefit to the town as a whole, basically runs and owns the community center and provides other sorts of things, green sponsored concerts and so on. So it's a, it's basically because they own and run the community center for the benefit of the town as a whole. There's no profit involved, it's a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, and there's just very little income to them except by renting the community center, and the town brings money also. So there's sort of no opportunity to create income to pay the taxes, and we, we, no, excuse me, they... And we, we, no, excuse me, they provide a public service, I think that's the rationale.
Well, I think the other, I think you're right, Terry. And the other thing is, I think they're all 501(c)(3)'s.
Amy Capitan, do we have a value for the property taxes for these state properties coming in? Or is voting blind?
You can find that online, property cards, the property identification numbers are there. There should be, there should be cards online.
Would you, I'll go back to the microphone and say your name again, I don't think it's up there.
Amy Capitan.
Thank you.
Hi, Gabe Sidington, I, just to add on to what you said. One of the reasons that we go through this process is that there now is a state property tax for education purposes. And I believe that the state for the, for those properties to be exempt from the education tax, the state requires them to have been approved at the town level to be exempt from the town municipal. It's one way for the state, for the states to get a message from the town that yes, these are nonprofit organizations that serve the town and have a value. So it, it is, we're only voting on exempting them from the municipal tax. But it sends a message, I believe, to the state in enabling these properties to also be exempt from the state. That's based on old information, I think it's correct.
You were there and that all happened, right?
So Dave Shuler, I think that is correct evidence it says so far. It's important to point out where a number of other properties in the town are exempt because of other reasons, because of state laws. So basically churches are all automatically exempt. We don't vote on them each time, but they're automatic by state statute. So there are other properties that are in this category. These are due to fall outside the ones of the
UVM.
Montpelier, UVM properties, et cetera. But these are what falls outside of Montpelier and has already pre-designated as properties that don't have to pay the state education budget. Really, for a lot of these small 501(c)(3)'s, et cetera, it's the state income, it's just the state education taxes that are burdening. You know, town taxes are, are not much, but the state taxes are like, the education is first thing, many small organizations, so nothing would mind.
Thank you.
Very helpful, thank you. Anything else on Article 6? And takes us some clarification on this whole set of articles while we're at it. Are you ready to vote on Article 6?
Yes.
All those in favor, please, uh, here we go again, sorry. Shall the town exempt from property taxation the lands and premises known as the Jericho Center Preservation Association, which consists of 0.35 acres with a community center building and 1.77 acres or less recreational acreage in Jericho Center for a period of five years? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Article passes unanimously. Article 7, shall the town exempt from property taxation? The lands and premises known as the Jericho Historical Society, which consists of the old mill building and 7.5 acres, a residential duplex building, and the old bindery building. I'll leave the numbers to you. 5.5 acres for a period of five years. What do you wish to do with Article 7?
So moved, Article 7. Peter Booth.
And second?
Second, Reed Sues.
Thank you. Questions or enlightenment on Article 7?
Hi there, can you hear me? My name is Betty Kusinski, and on behalf of the Jericho Historical Society, we wanted to put an amendment out there to give the Historical Society a report that didn't make it into the warning, but that we can do have copies of and would be like one. We wanted to reach out because of the recent conversation after the report was published. We hear and understand your concerns, we know that the mill is an important part of the history of the town, it's part of our identity.
Slow down there.
In the interest of time, because there's a lot to do and it's getting laid, I'll shorten the comment. We know that we're tasked with responsibility of being good stewards of the mill and millhouse properties. So we are not only aware of the work that's necessary to be done, but plus also we pri- we prioritize. So that's the most crucial project that we intend to do. And our example would be in 2022, we discovered that the basement of the mill house had water significantly so that it corroded, it corroded the support columns to the point that there wasn't much supporting the house. And so we had to undertake an extensive project to replace all of the supports and install a drainage system that would prevent recurrence. And the original cost to that was $3,740, after a discount, final cost to the Historical Society was $28,135. We just want you to be clear that the money that was referenced in conversations, as far as fundraising, was raised through generous contributions to our community, and that money means saving the mill. And we know that everyone's aware of the challenges of the riverbank project. We are waiting for a report from the engineer geologists to know what those final costs will actually look like. We really do not know what that will cost. And so we are prioritizing as we can to await that cost. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we're undertaking projects that will still allow us to pay the Historical Society's share of that riverbank project once that number is determined. So the paint, the roof, the windows are in the maintenance stages as the weather gets warmer. We will be seeking expert advice to guide our decisions. And finally, we greatly should, greatly appreciate the support of residents of Jericho. We ask that you continue to stay with us to provide exemptions from taxes for your property.
Thank you. Well done, thank you.
Hi, Babe McRae, I'm just curious, I have a question about the, maybe best, to you, about the residential duplex on the property. And so does that essentially mean that there is a residence that is tax-free in this property? Or who lives there, I guess that would be a question.
So I'm not the treasurer.
Do you have to come back here?
Betty Kusinski, so I'm not the treasurer, but I can say that the millhouse is part of the historical preservation. It is owned by the Historical Society. And so the residential income that we do receive from it supports the preservation of the property.
All right, Terry Hook here. I'd like to move an amendment to this article to modify the term five years to one year. And the rationale here is, while I appreciate the testimony that reprioritization will take place, I personally would feel a lot more comfortable seeing it happen in the succeeding 12 months. And I think this is a no harm, no foul proposition. They're not going to be compelled to pay taxes this coming year. But neither is the town committing to a five-year window to, I think there's quite a bit of interest in recognizing that some reprioritization really, really needs to take place. So that's my motion to modify five years to one year.
Second, Gabe Sidington.
Okay, first, just their discussion of the change from five to one years on this article.
Kipper Williams. Really hate to see
Well said.
I would really hate to see the Historical Society network further by throwing monkey wrench in, by not knowing what to do after the first year, not knowing what's ahead of them. Especially when we were just informed about how the state tax is working conjunction to that. It could be a really detrimental thing forward, and thank you.
The reason I supported Terry's amendment is I feel like this gives the Historical Society the opportunity to have the taxes after this year, but get a clear message that we would like more information. And that report that Betty read could be incorporated into the report. And we can go again next year on whether to have a property tax exemption for five years. So it's, so it gives them that year to be able to demonstrate that reprioritization. And then we can read and sit through it.
Anything else on Article 7?
Two admissions, one, I did not read all the reports ahead of time, so maybe that is my problem. Peter Booth, sorry. I feel like there's an elephant in the room about the Historical Society, that I don't know what it is. And maybe no one's comfortable naming it, but I don't know how to vote, and I'm not sure what discussions are at.
So the one thing that is certain is that the report of the Historical Society was submitted, but not incorporated into a town report. So we are operating in the absence of a report from the society, but not through their omission.
I'm not sure what the confusion is here, but
You named it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Anne Squire, and I'm on the Historical Society board. We have had a grant from the federal government to restore the foundation, to restore the wall. And which, at that point, they looked at the wall and they said, there's a crack in the building. If we do anything to the wall, we'll destroy the building. And then they came in and geologists, can you hear me? They, geologists came in and said, if we work on this building, their foundation has gone. And it's not on a solid foundation. So now they say they have to drain the bulvers from the river, get to the foundation, and then maybe they can make a decision. We are not, we can get a grant on the wall, but we can't get a grant on the foundation as of yet. The money that we had was sent back to the federal government because their officials didn't act in time for it to be okay.
Quite a clarification on that one.
What'd you say, Catherine?
I said, oh, yeah.
The money, excuse me, the money had to be sent back to the federal government because the federal government said that we couldn't do anything. The town actually has control over this project. And they couldn't do anything. We, the society, paid them about $96,000, and I don't know where that check is or what happened to it.
All right, so we need some clarification here. The, the natural resources and conservation of the federal government, they're the ones with the grantees, and it's an emergency water grant. And they choose the engineers for that project. And as it went forward, nobody, when it came time to bid, no one moved it because of the crack in the wall, because the contractors did not want to take any responsibility if it got worse. Then what happened after that is, by the time the engineers kept working on it, the cost ballooned. And then the final issue, as the, they brought in the geotechnical engineers, we even got our own consulting geotechnical and rock engineer. And what they decided, came down to is that there's concern about the stability of the foundation because it's on a significant slope. They, it's not on a straight surface, it's, the building is like this. And you can see that, you know, the building had dropped in that section a long time ago, causing a crack. So they tried to, you know, we had an ECI who's the only one bidder who bid on the secondary project. And they could not get the water low enough to see that particular corner of the foundation and the wall. And so the, so we tried to get another extension of the grant. And the governor came back and said, this thing, no, I think you gotta fix the wall first. But you gotta fix the foundation first, which then is a project that is not covered by this grant. That money can't, what we can do is use the funding that the town, the taxpayers have provided to the old mill to maintain the building and continue to work towards doing the engineering that's necessary to stabilize the foundation. And it has to do with rock bolts and all kinds of interesting things, but they want to be able to see the corner first. And then what happens after that is that, because the grant is still ours and it's sitting in Washington, they can come back to us and then finish the wall. So we have a lot to do this year. And, but Jack can have the water down so that it can. And they tried to get the water down in low water last year, and it looked good for a while, but there still is one boulder that's a problem. And since it's a big boulder, then we have to go get a state permit to work in the water to do something that way.
All of the money that's been collected to donations for grants has been sent into a CD, and none of that has been used for any of this, and it won't be used.
Well, the funding that the police did first for the, for the wall, that city and its own account in the, in the town, and they will go now.
And we had some criticisms that it should be used to paint, but there's no point in painting if you haven't built the foundation and the wall. It's in limbo right now until we get some decisions. But that shouldn't really affect whether we're a tax exempt for one year or five years.
Phil Maybaker, with all due respect, I don't think the question of five years versus one year is really about the building. There are a lot of questions about the Historical Society. Many of you know, a book came out, The Third History of Jericho, that was done without any involvement from the Historical Society. There's been a lot of turnover on the board, they haven't held any functions. And this is not something that we can do anything about here. I'm just trying to give the background for the reasoning behind. Perhaps only they can do one year to give the Historical Society a chance to let us know what they are doing for the community, and then we can help them out. Thank you.
Carl Lourenson, Sunset Bridge, thank you, Phil, for a little bit of explanation of what I was, what it, does this imply that a year from now Would this imply that a year from now, the Historical Society would not be recognized as, as worthy, with the tax exemption status? Is that
Yes, in the absence of a motion like this next year at this meeting.
Okay, so I think that they seem, at least in the past, to be a valuable asset to the town. And I guess what people are saying is that a year from now, there's an age group that's of no longer to be an asset to the town. So it's kind of, kind of a question of
So Terry Hook here, no, I don't think that's the correct characterization. This article can come back next year to exempt them from taxes for all eternity. It's what it says, it needs to come back next year for exemption to continue. In no way does it say a year from now, they can't redeem themselves in the eyes of men and be right back on the goodness.
Right. Anything else, people?
Elizabeth Bernstein, the gentleman who spoke of the elephant in the room, that's exactly it. Something is going on, and when, when we get that feeling, it usually means something is not being spoken. And there is concern about what that something might be. I have no idea what it might be. But if there has been some murmuring on front porch forum, and I think the prudent thing to do is to put up a little flag, which this motion does, to say, no, we're not going to keep business as usual for five years. Business as usual for one year. And in that one year, we want some more information about what's going on. Because something is going on that members of the town don't understand. And I'm uncomfortable proceeding with money and allocations in the future, into the future, if I don't know exactly what it's for. So I would, I'm speaking in favor of the amendment to lower it for one year.
Anyone else? By sense, we are ready to vote, is that correct? Any objection to voting? Article 7, shall the town exempt from property taxation the lands and premises known as the Jericho Historical Society?
I have something to say.
I have something to say.
Hi, Lisa Kirchberg.
I'm a member of the Jericho Underhull Lions Club. I think that the town should, actually, I think that the Historical Society should be like, "We are supporting them." I'm not sure what's been going on, but I think that the Historical Society is a very large part of the identity of Jericho. So I just wanted to say that if there's something that they think that they should let us know. I kind of feel like a year is not very much time, but after hearing what everything has to say, I'm sort of not sure now. So I just wanted to say that.
It's sort of a peculiar place for the moderator. Didn't the question was already closed? But, you know, we gotta let people talk sometimes.
Can we change the time range to two years, or motion one?
So let me just point out that you are saying that although the question's been... The motion to call a question is in place, and I've already closed the question, that you want to come up with a new version.
I just think that they don't have enough time to give us the reason that they want to.
I think that different people have their own time to decide whether to speak or not. So I'm gonna just move this question. Having gotten halfway through reading it back to you.
Point of order, don't we vote on the amendment first and then the questions first?
Thank you, Bernie. On the floor, Seth. So we got that worked out, and you're each gonna count three times. So all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands and keep them raised until you hear from me. This is from five to one. You're in favor of changing the number from five to one.
Okay, thank you for your gaze. We can just go down to the other end. And a note on the question.
Note, voting five to one. Okay, and finally abstained. Do we have any abstains? Okay, you're gonna have to let me do the math. So the amendment is passed by a vote of seventy-one in favor and forty-three against. There's no objection. We'll move on to the main motion of Article seven. All set? Vote on Article seven. All right, Article seven, shall the town exempt from property taxation, lands and premises known as the Jericho Historical Society, consisting of the Old Mill Building and seven point five acres of residential duplex building and the Old Pioneer Building for a period of five years?
One year.
One year. Okay, one year. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstained, and Article seven is passed. Article eight, shall the town exempt from property taxation, lands and premises known as the Mount Mansfield Lodge Number Twenty-Six, consisting of point three-three acres and the Mount Mansfield Lodge Number Twenty-Six Building for a period of five years? What do you wish to do with Article eight?
Move the article.
Thank you. Peter, vote.
We need to move, sorry.
And...
Any discussion or input? Need for enlightenment?
Amy, I have some questions. So as I understand it, the lodge apparently does not accept women, and the lodge also requires that you must conform to a higher power. I see this very different than the other two amendments that we just passed. I have some questions if there is a lodge member present. Why would you continue to pay our property taxes for them if it does not serve the entire community, as stand here as a woman who it does not serve?
As part of the Islamic fraternity, these historicists accept women, and they have an order for the girls, international order, the rainbow for girls. And they teach respect for the girl and charities and a bunch of other things. So if you want to join, you're welcome to. Just pipe.
Let's go speak a little more generally to the question that came up. Yes, the article wants to see organizations we talked about earlier. One of the differences that we have in the community versus members of Lions Club, for instance, is that we actually do own a property. Many of the other organizations don't have properties, therefore don't have the overhead of maintaining a property. But within the community, basically, we do, we're open for other community organizations to use our facility, other people, to use for funerals, to use for memorial services, you know, family gatherings, various things like that. But the question about women again was answered, I think, that there are parts of Masons open to women, open to youth as well, both male and female youth, male and female adults. They're all part of the Islamic family that we have. But one of the big differences, or not differences, the commonality we have in the community is we do a lot of service to the community, doing meal deliveries, helping the Jericho seniors, running meals for them. Meals for them, I'm sorry. We also, in effect, help sponsor the Memorial Day Parade. As members of the fraternity or actually the people that are helping to organize and run the parade, many times we're even invited guest speakers for that. So I think we're just a little bit differently visible in the community, but, you know, really it's not much different overall. We also do scholarships here for students, high school students, support boys and girls states, I said not with the parade. Yeah, and actually, as just mentioned, we do make donations to the libraries each year as well. But we do, in the past, if people have questioned, let's say, this last October and many Octobers, we've had an open house open to the community. I think this year it was well advertised on Front Porch Forum and other places. And also, we invited different people along to invite and have questions to come and visit us, actually come to talk to us, or at the building itself, to find out what we are and what we aren't. I think our big reason for asking for the payment of taxes, as I said earlier, was the crushing amount that the state school taxes really adds to it. We've been trying very difficultly, but we've been doing it to maintain the building, including things such as... Things that the Historical Society has actually had to worry about, worrying about the foundation, worrying about the electrical systems. We don't have a fire, and we had some pretty unequated electrical environments of change the last few years, and the ongoing outdoor maintenance as well. So it's a really small amount, but the amount of help we return to the community is probably equally in balance with that. And those services and physical time results in dollar donations to the community. And I'll just stay here in case there's any other questions that you'd address.
Thank you. That is very helpful, and I appreciate that. Can you tell me how many dues you brought in last year, and how much of that is going to the specific projects versus to property taxes?
Well, the specific projects, every year we actually run a deficit of dues, are really minimal, I think, forty, fifty dollars a person. So it's a very minimal amount for the number of members. And compared to a... What's the number there? Numbers?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty on the books, okay. Not many of them around the state. We talked, some are retired in Florida, other places. So it's not just physical, you know, but, for instance, the electrical work we did every year is about forty thousand dollars. May not... May sound like a lot, it may not sound like a lot, but to a small organization it is. Heating and building, electricity, all those trash picking, all those things cost. So I don't have a budget in front of me, but we actually, in effect, run a deficit every year. But we do run a deficit every year based upon dues alone.
Do you get any money from the national...
I spoke to the microphone, that was...
Sorry. Does the Islamic Temple get any funds from the national organization?
No, we don't. In fact, we end up paying. Well, truly, there is no national organization, but at the state level, we end up actually paying to support the state level, and that's it. There's no... We don't receive money from the town. We don't receive federal money or grants or things like that. And because of the, I'll call it the expense of having to support it, we actually haven't gone after historical grants against the building because it actually costs a whole lot more than we get out of it, in effect. So we pretty much are running a deficit every year.
Anything else relating to Article eight?
I would just like to say, to start with, I'm Grant Clark, Jericho Center. And I've been a volunteer board member at the Jericho Bootshoe for twenty-seven years. I am not a Mason, but we work with the Masons every Christmas. And they cook and deliver meals to people that are... I'm aiming to come out. What's that?
Shuddings.
Shuddings, thank you. So, and, you know, we've had a very good working relationship with them for... I don't think it's been twenty-seven years, but it's been a long time. Anyway, they do a good community service.
Stay, please.
I did say my name. My name is Grant Clark.
Anyone else? Ready to vote? All right, Article eight, shall the town exempt from property taxation, lands and premises known as the Mount Mansfield Lodge Number Twenty-Six, consisting of point three-three acres, and the Mount Mansfield Lodge Number Twenty-Six Building for a period of five years? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Abstained? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article eight is approved. Article nine. Shall the town exempt from property taxation the lands and premises known as the Widduski Valley Park District, consisting of eleven point four-eight acres, used for park for a period of five years? What do you wish to do with Article nine?
Move the question. Here goes.
And a second?
Second. If you're...
All right. Any discussion or wish for enlightenment on Article nine? It's quiet enough, so I'm going to move on here. All right?
Just a quick question, Lauren Montgomery-Reinhardt?
Get right close there and say your name again.
Lauren Montgomery-Reinhardt. Quick question. So the Widduski Valley Park District, isn't it larger than just Jericho? Then how does that impact it? How does it impact things if we exempt it from taxes but other towns don't?
Not a bro.
Not, no. Anything else on Article nine, people? Jim, the woman standing in back is next.
I think she's next, but I'll go.
I'm Sonia Skyler. This town represents the Widduski Valley Park District. It is a municipal district and owns eighteen parks. I don't know what other towns do. It's possible that they just exempt it without putting it as a question on the warning.
Sarah, thanks. I just had a question. It's called the Widduski Valley Park District, so I was just wondering what properties in Jericho that is?
The Old Mill Park is a part of the Widduski Valley Park District.
Thank you.
All set? Okay, Article nine, exemption of land and premises known as the Widduski Valley Park District, eleven point four-eight acres for a period of five years? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstained, passes unanimously. Okay, at this point, I will pass on Article ten, which is what I would characterize as a special article, which has been warned. And I will read that and then ask if there's someone who wishes to speak to it to give us a little more enlightenment. Article ten, we, the citizens of Jericho, propose the formation of Jericho as a vital food hub for the citizens of its town and environment. A food hub commission will be established with the goal of increasing food self-sufficiency via the production, manufacture, and distribution of local food. What do you wish to do with Article ten? The bill of names is, you're putting it on the floor, right? You're getting a motion on the floor, and then we have a second. Okay, put it on the floor.
Yeah. I was gonna say Article ten is a non-viting proposal for the purposes of a discussion on the topic. And so Laura Markowitz and Dave Cliff have done this, and they both speak to this issue.
Honored to be here speaking at Town Meeting Day. Laura Markowitz lives at the Barber Farm Homestead, and I'm a steering member of Transition Town Jericho, who initiated this proposition. Dave Cliff, your fellow steering member. Chris Sims, is there? And Navy, are you up? Yeah, we're all here. We would love to generate a discussion in the time we have here. In January, I'll give you a brief little lead up to today. In January, we presented this to the Slade Board, and we've been hard at work since then, talking to neighbors, friends, articles in the Mountain Gazette, meetings to enlighten what is a food hub. articles in the Mountain Gazette, meetings to enlighten what is a food hub. So, um, definition, as defined by the USDA, a food hub, quote, "a centrally located facility with a business management structure facilitating the aggregation, storage, processing, distribution, and/or marketing of locally, regionally produced food products." All right. A food hub can be one or two of, of these many things. Um, in Guilford, Vermont, uh, they have an online farmer's market that they call a food hub. In the Center for Agricultural Economy and Hardwick, they have, uh, trucks that go all over the state delivering produce, um, that they call that a food hub. So, um, a wide, uh, and the point is, if we want to pursue this in Jericho, it's a growing movement all over the state. Um, we, the citizens, decide what is, what we need, what this food hub will fulfill. Um, a brief story of how Transition Town came to introduce this. Uh, we've been around since 2016. And our goal is to build resiliency on the community from the town level, not the individual. Not waiting for national government, but doing it based on the town needs to build resiliency. And mostly in our first few years, we were educational, public, uh, forums. Um, since COVID, COVID changed a lot. We, our public meetings ended. And we came back in full force with more action. People wanted to get out there, uh, volunteering to, uh, pick and deliver produce to people in need via our extra row program, getting farmers to donate. And, um, last summer, we initiated a kids' garden contest. Our goal is to get the next generation enthusiastic about growing their own food. We'll continue that this summer. Um, and let's see, um, we, the, we feel like there is, there statistically is enough land in Jericho to feed all the residents produce-wise. Um, there are, um, there's no how, many of know how to process and store food year-round for all the residents. There are structures to support people coming together, sharing knowledge. Um, yes, we could adapt our zoning laws to be much more friendly to new upcoming farmers. Um, we could do much more education around the local food economy. Um, but, uh, I, I guess I wanted to, um, just use our imaginations for a minute and, um, consider, what if we had a central structure in Jericho where there could be a communal kitchen for processing food, space for incubator businesses, um, a, a plenty of space for storage, communal storage, and maybe space for a year-round market, farmer's market? Um, another what-if to imagine is, um, what if the successful business model of the community-supported agriculture, CSA's, could be community-supported food, CSF? Where you buy into it, it pays for itself, and it grows based on user, user-ness. It grows as it is successful. Um, what if there were many more community gardens, school gardens, neighborhood gardening hubs, where, um, neighbors share resources, skills, so not everyone has to garden, but you can have a hub around the gardener, gardeners in your neighborhood, and still have, um, access to that local produce? There's so many questions. Um, that building blocks are already here in Jericho, for sure. Um, with, it's just you named it, um, the Jericho Market, uh, the Settlers Farm, the number of homesteaders. We have so much knowledge and people doing these things already, but more or less on their own. Um, and we're hoping this resolutions will, um, make this vision a reality. Uh, the resolution also involves getting a, maybe a first of its kind, a food hub commission. Maybe it exists in other towns, but we thought this would be a great way to pursue the objective of creating in some form or fashion a food hub in Jericho. Thank you. I'll hand it over to Dave.
So through this process, we've had, uh, several questions about, well, why did you come and make this proposal at Town Meeting Day? And Transition Town Jericho, uh, thought that it'd be a great way to reach out to the community to find out your temperature. What is your temperature around, whether or not this makes sense to you for us to pursue a opportunity where we can take care of ourselves when it comes to food? Today, you will vote on whether you agree to, to, uh, support a commission that will be put together by the citizens, by ourselves. That will move to the future and, um, in the, do, in work that, uh, is intended to make sure that when, sir, when food processes and food deliveries and when shelves get empty at the grocery store like they did during the pandemic, that we're vital here and that we have in place already ways to eat to our, eat ourselves. This is not something that we can do today or tomorrow. This is something that's going to be done over the next three to five to ten years. Where we can set up arrangements around the town. We can incorporate local food producers and manufacturers. Give them an opportunity to thrive within the community. Take our dollars and pledge those dollars, the food dollars that we may spend over in Essex, and pledge those dollars locally to the people that produce our foods here in Jericho. So that is the whole idea behind today's, uh, vote this time. At the temperature of the town, do you agree this is a good process to follow? Or do you think not? So a yay vote would be, we think this is a good model to follow, to follow, Steve? And if you don't think it's a good model to follow, then vote nay. But, uh, it's, it's a starting point, and it's a blank piece of paper. And going forward, it will be what you want it to be. And it will be in support of you when it comes to your food security.
Any comments or ideas, questions?
Dave, is it your intention with this to obligate the town to set up a commission?
Microphone closer. Just get this microphone closer.
Hold the question.
Speak right to the top, I think. Is it your intention to obligate the town with this vote to set up a commission? Like, plan a commission?
It says commission, yeah. So it, it is, yes, um, it is a request for the town to help us formulate a group of people that will work together for these goals being sawed in, uh, in, uh, our foods and how we, uh, present foods to our community.
My name is Dave Shula. I had a couple of questions earlier that I proposed. And I, I'm, first of all, I'm going to be speaking opposition to the vote, uh, the concept of the vote. Uh, I asked a little bit about, you know, Transition Town Jericho, what it was. I had attended a couple of meetings many years ago, probably sixteen, seventeen. And it was interesting that it's not quite something that, uh, was going to take my time. And I asked since that time basically what's happened. And it sounds like very little in terms of organizational structure. As I said, it's a public forum, it's a group of people getting together. But there was nothing formal. There was, I asked if there was a 501(c)(3) possibly, a formal group that is truly registered, listed, created, 501(c)(3) or a co-op or something like that. Next was no, nothing. Still just a small group of people that kind of the concept. Uh, I asked if there were any plans for that, and he said, no, not really. Um, we're good where we are, we're just going to go for, trying to, all the way up to the Town Planning Commission, or equivalent to Town Planning Commission, in one shot, from the seat of the sticks. But there's a lot of things that could be done as a group like this, I think, long before getting the town entangled into this kind of an item. If there were to go something like a 501(c)(3) or another 501(c) possibility. There's a lot of grants that might be available from the Department of Agriculture, for instance, to get some of this stuff, though, to help with kitchens, to help with facilities, get them created. Um, also, you're going to potentially, if you have a 501, you're going to have a membership in that group. Hopefully, that group, uh, people will make donations to you to fund the members themselves or putters in community and see value in what you're doing. Again, a source of funding. Uh, there might be private grants. There's many places you can get private grants if you, you know, work on it a little bit. As well as possibilities, something like health and human services, et cetera, with the federal grants. So I question really the need to go the town half as opposed to becoming a registered organization, 501(c)(3) or similar, uh, and, and doing all these things. I think that some of the other locations in the state where we have these food centers, if it's a food kitchen, where they're doing a commercial, uh, small batch commercial work, et cetera, those are all basically private, uh, 501, but in jum, jum, speaking, a private kind of activity, not something the towns have been entangled with. Uh, also with, um, other places, I think it's been similar. So the concept is interesting, but I think the method of going, how can the town do this is the one that I'm, I'm not agreeing with.
Wow, you bring up really good, uh, points. Um, we have not needed to be 501(c)(3). We've been able to get grants. We've had sister organizations offer us help with that. Haven't had to. We like our freedom. Um, and I could definitely see that we're, we don't want to take on, we are very happy to have sprouted, we hope we have sprouted the beginnings of a food hub. We have other things that we do in Transition Town. Uh, maybe one of us on the steering group will help it go forward, but that's not our intention to take it on as Transition Town. We want this to be owned by our town, maybe in the form of a 501(c)(3) that forms by Transition Town Jericho. Um, we like our grassroots ability to, to do what we've done. We've done quite a few things over the years. This is a really, seems like it might get bigger than anything we can tackle. Um,
The only comment I have is that you are the town. These folks up here are the town. And by using the resources of the entire group, we can do more if we can be, um, agree that this is a good way forward. If we agree that this is a good way forward as a town, then we can do more than just what four people in Transition Town Jericho would be under a 501(c)(3). So we're really looking to you as town members to say, yeah, we think that this is a good idea or not.
Hi, uh, my name is Susan Brusie. I think it's a really cool idea. It's really hard to start from scratch. And, um, we talked earlier about the recreation committee that evaporated. Um, we have the same concerns about burdening you or us, you know, a lot of structure initially. I wonder if maybe terminology, by calling it a commission, um, like a planning commission is organized by state statute. We have to comply with open meeting law. So I'd like to be able to vote yes. And I'd like to know that I can think about it as a task force. And I'd like to know how people will be selected to serve or volunteer to serve on the task force, what kind of supervision the select board would have over the work of the task force, and how the findings of the task force would be returned to the town so that we can sort of decide next steps and, um, moving forward. And, uh, if I were comfortable with the answers to those things as like, let's give this a whirl, let's see how far we can get, I'd like to support the enthusiasm and support the idea. But I think that, um, like we just talked about, the historical society being too separate and, and from the town without the normal structures of the town can sometimes be unnerving, especially because you're talking about big, important things, economic development, buildings, businesses, zoning. Those are all essential to the town. And so it seems to me like within the constructs of the town, subject to many of the same constraints, would, um, be more comfortable to be able to say yes.
So would you want to make an amendment to change work permission to task force?
Sure. I don't know if I'm allowed to, but I think task force is more appropriate. And, but I would also like to hear clarification of maybe, and I don't know if it has to be in the language, about how the members of the task force are appointed and supervised.
So, uh, first, I just want to make sure that everybody in this room knows that you own this meeting.
That's it.
So of course you'd be making the amendment.
Okay, I guess so. I would suggest that we call it a task force and that we just be a little bit more clear about who's on it and how the results will be recorded before, you know, everybody gets worried about spending money and making rules and it's like, but we don't want to, I, I, I personally don't want to dampen your enthusiasm. This is really hard to get volunteers to do the work. It's hard work. You're standing up here with a really new idea, and I'd like to encourage that kind of risk-taking, but provide the appropriate guardrails.
I, uh, I'm, get just, my first shot is that the way you get an action like this to go often goes along the lines of, including in language, a charge to the Board of Select Persons to establish a task force. Uh, be the kind of language that would be typical in this case. And I would delegate how the whole appointment process happens to them. Because you've already voted for it and you trust them.
So would you guys, would you feel too constrained by yes? Hopefully not. So I guess my amendment would be, would the select board appoint a task force to investigate the idea of Jericho becoming a food hub and report to the select board on a regular basis? And the select board appoints the members? And then there's a report in the town report next year? That, that'd be awesome.
Second.
I would, um, that feels a little needlessly complex to me. I, um, I'm wondering if the language could simply be changed to, um, a food hub task force will be established?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's nice, it's very well worded as is. And I also thought it'd be really good, before we make an amendment, to hear other people's comments, maybe.
Established by who? Established by?
Will be established. It could be by the select board, whatever, or a corporate moment. Yeah, okay.
All right, so, uh, we're in the middle of the process here, so I'm going to have you wait. Um, so we're building what amounts to an amendment to this, um, article. And the substitute language for the second, um, sentence would be roughly along the lines of, "A task force will be established by the select board with the goal of increasing food self-sufficiency, et cetera." Uh, is that, I'm, this is, this is actually your amendment, believe it or not. Are we there?
Yes, sure. But with reporting. Yes, sure.
I'm sorry, say that again?
With, uh, I mean, I think it sort of implies if it's commissioned by the select board, the select.
If the task force is established by the select board, then I think the select board can apply its reporting, recording.
can apply its reporting requirements to the group, which is morally what they would do.
All right. I just wanted to add that Susan's discussion, I appreciated that it sort of pulled back a little bit, which is to establish a task force, get some information, then we'll talk again. That's a little different than this, which says, pony up and head on down the road and see what you can do. This feels like there may be some obligations we have not yet discovered, and that's fine if everybody wants to do that. But Susan's suggestion originally was, we call it a task force, they're charged with, go ahead, check it out, see what we need, X, Y, and Z, then come back to us and let's discuss. So there's a little bit of a difference between the two. I would like to know if the citizens understand the nature of this amendment. Did you understand the content?
No.
So, give me a so move, Sue.
A so move?
The amendment.
Okay. So the amendment is for the select board to establish a task force to investigate Jericho, I don't have the words in front of me, becoming a food hub in order to develop food resiliency.
Right, what it says in there.
To operate with the normal procedures of a town task force.
And reporting back to the.
Yeah, okay. We, the citizens of Jericho, propose, the select board forms, oh, no, propose, yeah, the select board forms a task force to investigate the formation of Jericho as a vital food hub for the citizens of the town. A food hub task force will be established with the goal of increasing food self-sufficiency via production and after distribution of local food. That's it.
Does I have a second?
I second. Too frankly right.
Okay, so discussion of the amendment, we're on an amendment.
We're on an amendment, okay. My name is Reed Sims. I support that amendment. I would like to commend the Transition Town Jericho group for their many communications through the front porch forum and other ways with the citizens of the town. Do we have to wait there and vote on the amendment now before other comments?
Oh, no, you can comment all you want on the amendment. So we're really, the town has a transition commission to a task force.
Okay. I think a task force well represents the town's people as well, as required or as given power to represent townspeople by the vote here. And I wanted to comment that, knowing that there are people in town who prepare food for sale, having purchased some of that food, I know that it's very hard to have a kitchen and preparation point because of the rules that Congress sets USDA. I'm a former USDA employee, retired. So I commend the idea of building such a facility that would meet all the state and federal requirements for hygiene, et cetera, at a food hub. And I really want to say I appreciate the idea, because I think there are many people who could and would take advantage of such a food hub. And I also wanted to respond to the question of whether the town needs to do anything about it, or if it should just be a 501(c)(3) with their own, their own membership and support. I know that the Transition Town movement is really centered around the citizens of the town coming together, like we are here, to promote the ideas and work out the logistics and things of creating a food hub. So I like the idea that the town select board and the townspeople are involved.
So just as a reminder of, excuse me, just a minute.
Just a reminder of where we are in the process. We are simply changing a little bit of language in the Article 10 to move from establishing a commission to establishing a task force charged with reporting back to the select board within the year to, as a basis for further progress. And so, let's get through the amendment. So, if you could just speak to task force versus commission, or wait till we make motion or agree.
Sarah King, I'm just looking at the appointed town committee members page, right? And so I'm assuming that what we're asking for is to add the task force now to this. And I just, I just wanted to note that there is a committee, a commission, a board, a corp, a task force, and a couple more committees. So I think calling any of those things puts it on this list of things that groups of people who are doing good work in the town, that the town is expecting a report back from. So I think task force is a great thing to put.
Hello, Wendy Marie Baranback. I'm speaking in support of the amendment for a task force language, and I think it's really aligned. I think it's really aligned with the town plan, all throughout the town plan. There's language about preserving the working landscape, and yet there's no specific body that is really looking at how do we, as a town, preserve our working landscape. So I think this task force has the potential to do that, and I appreciate the passion that you're bringing to this and your energy.
Okay, any interest of expediting things? Could I get a vote on the change in language, which implies a, actually a clearer definition of how we're going to move on this? Are we ready to vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all in favor of the amendment to move to task force thing?
The amendment?
You want me to do that? Yeah, your favorite.
I have a word, but I need one moment.
Yep.
Can we first vote on the commission aspect first, depending on your day, and then go forward on the task force? So at least.
Other way.
It's too late, I'm sorry.
The other way, we're going to, we're substitu, the amendment is to replace the idea of a commission with the idea of a task force.
We're not bound, we're not bound, we vote otherwise in the vote in the town discussion.
Not if we change to the language using the amendment.
Okay, we can't vote to defeat that, if you will, or vote in favor of it, and then we'll vote separately for a task force.
No.
So we eliminate the commission aspect only, we can't do that.
You're going to eliminate the commission idea if you vote no on this amendment.
Okay, but we're not obligated to remove what is portioned in legally, or what to vote on.
I'm lost.
Well, in the vote, it says, can you vote, are the commission invited?
Right.
Should we not vote on that first, and then vote separately?
That's not how this process works. So a citizen, a citizen stood up and said, I don't like the language of this, of this motion, I want to change the language, and here's my amendment, here's I want to change it. And now the citizens are deciding whether they agree with that amendment.
Well, I understand, but it's the original wording, commission, that in the original proposal, it shouldn't be eliminated or not, and we not add an amendment to it, strike down what is, we are supposed to vote on or not, and then vote separately if you want a task force or not.
It's Robert's Rules of Order.
I need help, I.
Maybe I can find one off.
No, it's just, I.
I think if we just say it's Robert's Rules of Order, would, when you have.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't, this is how we do business. I'm sorry. But if there's, if there's an amendment, it's actually an alteration of the original motion.
But if the amendment does not pass, then we would vote on the original.
Then we go back, yeah.
Yes.
The commission idea is there. So US citizens have a choice at this point, is whether they want to do the amendment or the commission thing. And so you say, well, I want to do the amendment thing, and if everybody agrees with you, then we vote on the amendment, which implies that we've rejected the commission idea.
So you have to change the language on the, on the article then? That's what we're voting on. You want to change the language on that?
I'm so sorry.
Then change it.
Our first thing is language, it's different, like different ones that were all slightly different, and that it wasn't common.
All right, let me.
So can, can, the select boards come up, they're the ones that are going to have to do this, and what is their capability, or do you want to raise one, or how, you know, how much of a debate is strong.
I'd like to call the question.
Can they?
All right, people, wait, wait, wait. Give me a couple minutes, I'll write out a formal version of the amendment. Would you come up and help me?
Yeah, well, I'd like to clarify that I'm not wordsmithing. I don't care what it's called. My, my goal is that it is formed by the select board, and therefore, subject to all the normal routines of the town doing stuff, and investigating stuff, and deciding stuff. So I think I boil it down to, keep the first, we, the citizens, propose the formation saying, a food hub task force will be established by the select board with the goal of, that's the amendment.
Right. So I read the whole thing.
So the amended language is, we, the citizens of Jericho, propose the formation of Jericho as a vital food hub for the citizens of its town and environments. A food hub task force will be established by the select board with the goal of increasing food self-sufficiency via the production, manufacture, and distribution of local food.
Yes. I, yes.
And report.
I mean, that's how, that's how it all works. Like, if, once you're established by the select board, open meeting law, they are involved in appointing the members, like we don't, all, there's a million things they have to do.
Yeah, we don't need.
Just by saying it's established by the select board is an umbrella term that provides accountability, transparency, consistency, alignment, communication.
All right, so the last, the last element of this, which is still up for discussion, is the idea of reporting back to the, the select board. And I think it was within the year, right?
Yes, within, there's a lot of other things that come with the.
Order, order, can I make one of my comments, please? Can we at least remove the words commission?
That's what we're talking about.
That's what it is, so you should vote yes.
The amendment language does not have the word commission.
Should the, if we are eliminating the commission?
No.
That word should. It's been eliminated.
If you proposed your language, you've eliminated your language, you don't have to say anything else.
Please, you should.
No, you don't. I've been doing this for a long time. The Article 10, the amended language will now be, the citizens of Jericho propose the formation of Jericho as a vital food hub for the citizens of its town and environments. A food hub task force will be established by the select board with the goal of increasing food self-sufficiency via production, manufacture, and distribution of local food, which will report back to the select board within the coming year.
Move the question.
Thank you.
Actually. No, sorry, didn't move.
Sorry.
I'm now going to get your vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Vote. Okay, the amendment language stands. Now, we are to the main motion of Article 10, which reads exactly the same way. I'll repeat it again if you'd like me to.
No.
Are you ready to vote on Article 10? Yes. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Vote nay. Nay. Let me just make a comment. Thank you for your patience, because a lot of times the moderator has kind of forced the lang, you know, kind of cornered the citizens in getting the language, and you worked very well on that. So we're moving on. We have two more articles, I want to talk, just explain a little bit about Article 11, which is the reports of the town officers. These are in the warning for the meeting, they're all in the warning for the town meeting, they are incorporated into the results of this meeting as a result. The only reason we would bring anything up here is if you have a problem or a comment to make about one of the reports. So at this point, I will open the floor to comments or concerns about the reports of the town officers, and this implies, by the way, all of the reports that are brought into the town report. Anything you want to bring up?
Gary Irish. I have a question on the select board's report on page 22, in regards to the old red mill. The last sentence made some comment about work at river level will resume in the summer of 2023. I know they have had a report back from a hydrological engineer that suggested the first priority that they should be pursuing was to remove the five rocks that fell into the river back in the flooding in 2013, and I know they removed one of them last fall. I'm wondering if this is what is intended for the summer, is to remove the other four that are remaining? In regards to that, I know there's been some question about paying for it. I have had contact at both Senator Sanders and Senator Welch's office, that there apparently are some funding grants that might be available for this sort of work. And wondering, I've had a comment from the county administrator, that he says he's not involved in looking at any grants or anything, that this is a historical society project. We just had a comment a few minutes ago from the president of the historical society saying, no, this is nothing they have anything to do with, this is a town project, and so the whole thing seems to be kind of just being passed off from one to the others. I wonder if we can get a little clarification on what the scope of the work is, that is intended for this summer, and what the prospects for grants and so forth are paying for.
Yeah, I can. Check. Yeah, I can answer that. So the discussion has been about the ongoing work on the mill. The intention is to go back and have whatever needs to be removed, removed, so we can get the water level down. In terms of seeking grant funding, I haven't had that discussion with the select board, Gary. Basically, the, I work at their discretion, the select board indicates that it's within my purview. To seek those funding sources and grants, I will do so. But there are lots of other priorities that I have to tend to. That was absolutely what I was trying to communicate, and I will move forward from there.
Anything else on the reports to the town? All right, I think that's no. So I am going to move on to other business. And as I said at the beginning of the meeting, the select board would like to first bring up under other business, the matter of the ARPA situation, if I may invite you to do so.
We are glad that we've had some feedback here today. We've worked in isolation a little bit, and I did want to give you back to the first slide. This is in the middle of the presentation, John.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go. Yep. Just to give you a little bit about the ARPA funds and the status of that money, we are... And then after that, get a little more information about the recent purchase. But you can see, this is our total allocation, $1,490,000. There were some original approved uses. They're much more restrictive than the ultimately final rules, which have to do with... If you're a little bitty town and you're only getting less than 10 million, you can use this as sort of one-time revenue. In other free, in other words, freebie money. No, not yet. And the uses could include cybersecurity, ADA, any capital improvements, HVAC, energy, I mean, I really mesh, mashed, this is a 497-page document that I have. So it may not be entirely accurate in that way. Affordable housing, trails, DEI, diversity and equity, and any kind of hybrid equipment. Now, there's all sorts of nuances to that, as you can all imagine, but I'm just trying to encapsulate this quick. I feel a little bit about like Uncle Frank after you've had a big turkey dinner. Anyone who has gray hair would remember the days. Uncle Frank would take out the trays and slide about his trip to Fort Lauderdale. And then you were like, oh my God, not now. But I just have a couple of these that illustrate, next slide. This is the timeline where we first received the public information about eligible uses. Then we, the town of Jericho, about the ARPA expenses, we tried to solicit some public use, some input on it. We did some surveys. The planning commission and the affordable housing committee developed some recommendations, and we started to review the survey results. This also is worth pointing out. We transitioned from one town planner to an interim period, to another town planner. And then we also moved from one town administrator to an interim, follow-up, to finally hiring John. So the two people on the staff who we kind of fell into the Bentleywick, they were transitioning in the middle of COVID while this was all going on. This makes it look so linear and neat and tidy, and it really wasn't like that at all. You can see in 2023, we're going to review the recommendations. We are going to talk a little bit more about the implementation timelines. And then in 2024, we've got to actually get down to brass tacks about which things are actually going to be done. The project work happens in 2025. 2026, all this work is in theory supposed to be done, although that's, it sounds like that's loosening up a little bit. And then 2027 is the last year that we actually get to report exemptions. So we can move on to the next slide here. These are the two, the select board worked with the town planner. This is the first survey we did with the more restrictive rules, we had 15 questions. This survey was all over the place because it was blanks. What do you want to do with this one? There was one question, there were 60 responses about what do you want to do with the money? Well, it's hard to aggregate a pattern of responses when you have 60 individual. So it's not, it doesn't make a compelling case. But if you read the tea leaves, I tried to take a look at, what were the things that had more than 15%? That's pretty low. 15% mentioned within all this report. Again, I'm boiling down a report to just a little bitty piece here, a couple bullet points. Broadband, 31%. Affordable housing, 28%. Food shelf, 22%. Water improvements, 18%. Sewer, 16%. Everything else dropped off from there. You'd have 2% because it was just not usable. Next slide. So then we had another slide, we had another survey when the uses were broadened. And we could use it for, as I talked about before. But there were some, some themes that came out of that, which was affordable housing. Rehab existing homes into multi-units. Housing down payment program, fund for construction to help with ADUs for rental, a little bitty rental units. A revolving loan fund for infrastructure. Childcare center. Town hall ADA compliance. There was a little less support for redoing the town center library completely. So that was the select board slash town planner's job. Next. Then the planning commission came in, did a ton of work on ARPA, and they came up with some recommendations here. You can see contracted a real estate or development professional to advance housing. Complete riverside wastewater study. Prioritize riverside according to recommendations. And negotiate with landowners to accelerate development, focusing on internal roads, sidewalks. Consider an active role for the Jericho Community Development Corporation. And I apologize, they did months of work and I just reduced it to 35 words or something. But they were very thoughtful, open working sessions, people had an opportunity to weigh in on that. Next. And then the affordable housing committee did something similar. And here are some of their suggestions. Establish a land bank. Facilitate landowner recommendations. Buy and sell property. And then identify the debt capacity of the town. Next. And then these are the, these are the sort of the general takeaways. A greater support for broadband, affordable housing, infrastructure, ADA accessibility. Less of support for daycare, renovation of the town library building. It's a lot of work to reduce to five or eight words, but that's sort of our general impression of what we got from the community. Next. And then we've received some other requests from the fire department, Brands River, Mills Riverside, Town of Jericho, you'll see these in just a second. The Rossman Library, a citizen for their neighborhood water association, highway garage, and the food shelf. Next. And then this is the only dense slide. This is when Uncle Frank would take out, oh, and now that I got you here. But here's some of the other things you can see in this column. These were some of the, this is really almost the total of the suggestions that we've received. I've organized them into who we received them from. These are the dollar amounts. If there aren't dollar amounts, we don't have a specific proposal to act on at this point. We may need to request one. But you can see the highway garage assessment. I want to take this opportunity again to say this is, this is ticking, this clock keeps ticking. So we've got to pay attention to, you know, it's not like a disaster. It doesn't look like the one in Charlotte used to look like, but it's going to need attending to. And these are just some, just see some of these proposals. We're splitting the cost with the town of Underhill. The food shelf way up top, what's town of Essex and town of Underhill share? I mean, this is more or less like a status report that looks neat and tidy. We haven't spent a whole lot of the money. This was, at one point, the estimated 790,000 were the estimated cost for possibly redoing the town center library. You can see the 380 was the, the housing that was just purchased. And these things we haven't quite approved yet. We did talk with Matt and the department the other night about this communication and field equipment. This is the Underhill, I mean, this is the Jericho share of that. But this is sort of where we are. We've done a couple of other things about cybersecurity. But this is our list that we've been able to pull together. And I think we'll probably post this on the, on the website after town meetings, so people can take a look at it. The select board hasn't made any final decisions on all of those items other than this building that kind of fell into our lap. Next. And then these are some of the review criteria, truth be told. It's really mostly Underhill's. I mean, they did all the heavy lifting. If you've, if you've got cable, you've seen Underhill Enrichment have been actively working on this as well. Does the investment increase public safety? Does it create a need for additional revenue? Is this a one-time expense? And these get more to the heart of the original purpose of ARPA. One-time, does it benefit population disproportionately affected by the pandemic? Population underserved? Climate change? Improve infrastructure? I feel like I'm racing through this, which Uncle Frank never did during the slideshow. But, but this is, these are some of the things we have to bring to mind before we make our decision. Next. And then these are some of the things we're doing ARPA-related. We're pursuing these opportunities for permanently affordable owner-occupied housing. I had somebody email the other night, why do you keep using that phrase? Because whatever we do about affordable housing, we want it to be affordable in perpetuity, not just for the smart slob who got the first shot at it and then 15 years later bailed out, made the money, and we don't have anything for the next person. As well as owner-occupied, they've got skin in the game here in the town of Jericho. So the infrastructure, working on the official town map. And broadband is really going to be taken care of separately. We have the CUD, you've probably been reading about it on the, on the phone. That's really, we're going to be making progress in that area. And we're accepting more proposals. Shovel-ready is really not real, but that's what we're using as a calling card. Next. So that's where we are. We're, you know, I just implied it, and I wanted to make a point to show everybody that the purchase wasn't just the three of us sitting under a blanket saying, you know, we got a good idea, let's do this one. You know, there was a context to it, and we're trying to be mindful of it. I have to say before I turn this over to Eric, I'm really under, I'm really appreciative people are staying so late. But we got to do something about town meeting. We have got to change town meeting to Monday night or something else so people who don't have gray hair can attend this meeting. This is crazy. So I hope by saying this publicly, I'll give myself a kick in the rear and we'll move this down the road a little bit. This is, we need more people involved in this. But for you, thank you so much for that, for this, listening to this progress report.
I was a little shocked that my wife didn't take time off and work on this. So I, I wanted to talk a little bit about the purchase of Two Row Circle. There's some really good conversation on Front Row Forum regarding that specific purchase. Wayne kind of laid out sort of the background of where the money came from. But there's, there's some pretty good themes that I just wanted to try and touch on here. And so the first one is, the way I broke it down in my head was, the first thing is, did the town get value from this purchase? And when I say value, I'm, I'm going to talk later about why we did the purchase, but I just want to speak to a little bit about the value of the property that we purchased. We purchased the property, Two Row Circle, for $380,000. And so ignoring all the purposes that we bought it, I just want to speak to the value of it. So why was the town interested in this property? It's village center, it's a designated growth area by the state, it's quarter acre zoning, there's natural gas on the site, there's internet on the site. It is actually a town-maintained road, even though it's this tiny little road. It was actually written in the deed, it is the third road to officially be accepted by the town of Jericho. So it is, I guess I don't know one and two, but it's the third most oldest road in Jericho. So the town actually clouds that little, that little bit. The property's flat. And of course, it's walking distance to the school, it's walking distance to restaurants, it's close to the gas station. Those are some of the things that, why we were interested in it. Those are also the same things that other bidders saw as value in that property. I do want to remind people, assessed value is not the same as actual value. Demand is what sets the value. There were 13 bids in this property. Those that were bidding, those other 12 bidders saw the same value in this property. And so that's what drove that price. Those 13 bids were due in six days. So I believe the property was listed intentionally at 260 or whatever that original price was to spur excitement and to drive bidding war, and that's exactly what happened. I also want to mention, I do not believe that we were the highest bidder. If the town had not been a bidder in this property, the sale would have been higher. I believe that. I suppose I have no way to actually prove that, but that is what I truly believe. And so why do I think we weren't the highest bidder? So it was one of the worst-kept secrets, I suppose, because people knew the town was interested before I knew the town was interested in it, once it came up for sale. And so it didn't take long for the actual heirs of the estate to get in touch with, with the select board. And so I actually had conversations with both of the McMullen children about our interest in it. And they both expressed interest that they really wanted this property to be used for affordable housing, that their parents would have wanted that. And Lyra, who I went to school with since first grade, said, you know, if my parents were to move to Jericho now, they would not be able to afford to live in Jericho. They would have had to go somewhere else. Again, still trying to speak to the value that the town got with that money. I believe the other bidders would have probably renovated the existing house, subdivided off the remaining two acres. The house parcel with no repairs could be estimated at around worth $130,000. And then the two acres remaining could have been subdivided, and that would have been worth around $250,000. It's very easy to get to 380,000. And I got a couple different comps from Realtors in helping sort of articulate this. There was a building lot on Walnut Lane, Black Walnut Lane, 1.9 acres, $220,000, that one went for. Similar government tax, 1.6 acres, $175,000. So I think that speaks to where the value of that 380,000 is. So why did we get it? We articulated it a lot. I know Chuck Lacy has a booth out there. We feel the market's not going to add affordable housing on its own. The latest trends in, of homes built in Jericho prove that it's going to take efforts on all fronts to bring affordable, or what I've heard it referred to as workforce housing, to our town. Updating zoning regulations, partnered with outside agencies such as Shapling Housing Trust, and direct involvement in the town with this one. And, you know, as Wade said, we have had a lot of input from a ton of really good work from the affordable housing committee and planning commission that made this as a direct recommendation of what to do with this one-time money. The next thing, I'm guessing, is, that I think is important, is what's next for this property? I will say upfront, we don't know exactly, but here are some possible scenarios that we're considering. Maybe we would fix up the house and sell just the house and the barn off, retain the two acres, partner with Shapling Housing Trust or similar agency to develop four to six units that remain, as Wade said, perfectly affordable. Another option is to utilize one of those agencies for the whole, the whole property, have them involved in the, in the house and the renovation, include that as part of it. Could be another agency, Hattler for Humanity. But I wanted to point out, in all of those scenarios, at least some of the money would go back to the town. So if we sold the house off, that money would go back to Jericho. If we partnered with CHT, certainly they would take some of it, but some of that money would go back to the town. If we partnered with CHT, certainly they would take some of it, but some of that money would go back to the town. What else, Eric? Yeah, we may not recoup all the money, but the town could certainly recoup some of it. In all the scenarios, whoever buys those units will be on the great list. They will be paying property taxes, just like any other purchaser. If families with children purchase any of those units, the town's share of education tax goes down. More kids in school, the lower our education tax. And then, you know, this is what made me personally feel okay with this, with this purchase. It's a lot of money in the town to just go out and do. But here's where I personally got okay with it. If all of that fails, all the rest of that fails, for some reason, we can't partner with anyone. We have no luck in any of this. I think that is an extremely unlikely scenario. But in the worst-case scenario, if all that fails, we can still sell this property back and I believe we'll get all of our money back. So that's, I just wanted to, you know, verbally explain kind of some of the thought process that went behind, behind this purchase. And I think it's very exciting, I think it's great that we're going to get to actually try to get our feet wet and actually doing, as a town, as JCPC, as the Affordable Housing Committee Jericho, the Planning Commission, and the Select Board, to really work and actually get our feet wet in getting some of this. So we'll, we'll learn a lot in doing this project, so.
We'd love to hear just a little bit of feedback about it. Affordable, this is not local tax dollars being used for something that so much of us have said we want to see part, you know, we want to see an increase of, so.
Peter Booth, thank you, Eric, for your detailed explanation. I just want to say, I believe, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm guessing that three weeks ago, you had no intention of taking 20 minutes, I'm sure a bunch of your time before the meeting, to explain the situation at that level of detail. I am concerned that things that happen on Front Porch Forum get amplified to a level of panic and outrage pretty quickly. I think, I hadn't done this, but I think if you went, if you went back through the Front Porch Forum posts about this topic, there's two or three people who are doing most of the posting, and a lot of the posts are sort of like, "I'm just asking the questions," which is the most infuriating thing ever. Like, "Is Jericho the most racist town in Chittenden County?" "I'm just asking questions." Like, it's just, it's insinuating. So when we see, "We're paying a sheriff $140,000, what's that all about?" Well, why don't you go to a meeting or ask somebody who can actually answer that question, rather than just blasting things on Front Porch Forum? So I'm not saying people shouldn't be asking questions, it shouldn't be, you know, push the select board to be clear.
Like the conflict of interest, that is a perfectly legitimate question.
Absolutely. So I just, I appreciate you putting the time in, and I just apologize that you have to sort of get blasted by people who, who don't understand what you're doing and often assume the worst of your intentions. So thank you for your work.
Thanks, I very appreciate that. And I feel your sentiment. I do think that I probably would have mentioned something anyway here, because I did, we spent $380,000 of one-time money. But it did remind me of one other point, I guess I didn't write it down or I skipped over it. When that money comes back, whether it's through sale or through whatever, it goes from a reserve account where it was sitting into an account that has left fewer restrictions on it, right? Where it's sitting now in the reserve account, we have a deadline, we have all those things we are allowed to spend it on, and when we have to spend it on, although it's likely that that date moved out, but as of now, we have this, you know, as we sell these units, as we, as we do whatever, as we get that money back in, it will come back into a different type of fund, I think. Brian might shoot for saying that, but I believe it will come into a fund, but we will have a little more discretion over what we do with it as well, so.
Is the select board laundering money? I'm just asking a question.
Brian Appleberry, just me. You all sound and act pretty guilty. So I'd like to know, and I'm not aware of something like this ever happening before, can you tell me if there's a precedent for the select board spending hundreds of thousands of dollars without the voters' approval?
This is a real interesting kind of thing. When the federal government, municipalities usually don't get any funds from the federal government under, you know, even when they did, you know, sharing money, it all went to the state. This is the first time that it's ever been sent to the lower, the smaller, you know, municipalities. And the, the way it was set up is that, sorry about that, allergy or something, anyway. That the legislative body has to find a word, that's it. And so because of that, that's why we, as a town, put surveys out privately. You know, once we had the interim rules, the surveys went out with the broad categories from the interim rules, what do people want to do? And then from those surveys, the higher responses went into the second survey only much more detailed. What do you, how do you see this broken out? And then because at that point, the final rules came out, and we added some of the other things that were now allowable, seeing where the public went, that's how the public has input in this. Other towns took the same, we were one of the first ones to do the surveys. Other towns, based on contact with the LCT, is that they also, there's other towns that have done surveys. Other towns like Underhill or Richmond, they've appointed a committee, that's all, a committee to vet proposals that are sent in now, and these are formal proposals. And then the committee then vets and sends it to the select board, so the select board will approve. That's how the process works. We thought we would have, by doing a surveys, one, the first one had, oh gosh, I gave you the numbers, but the first one had over 200 some, 280, something like that responses. The second one had 316 responses. At least we heard from people. But if, like, even here, we might not have had 300 some people. Coming to the select board, you might not have had that. And this was, that was the opportunity for people. We posted it on Front Porch Forum, please answer the surveys, please answer the surveys. So this is how, and the town does have, and the select board, based on the select board headline, does have the authority to buy property as needed, you know, depending on funding sources. But we do need a formal vote to sell property. Does that answer your question?
Sounds like the answer, no, there's no precedent.
Yes, because there's no precedent for this. I mean, with lots, looking at the list of other towns, they're buying land too. They're buying land, they're buying houses, they're renovating, they're weatherizing homes. The ideal behind this, behind the money is to be transformative with one-time money. This is, this is unique money, and it probably will never happen again to a municipal level.
Just a couple quick comments. One is that I disagree with, remember the board previously put value in this not paying local money? All taxpayer money.
Yeah, it's all taxpayer money.
Definitely taxpayer money. I pay my federal taxes and I'd like to know how it's backed. Prefer to know how it's backed in advance and get a opportunity to vote on it. Is it safe to say that in the future, you're not going to put anything to do with the pedal line on up front?
As Wayne said, some of these other things will be discussed in, you know, public, at select board meetings. We encourage people to pay attention, whether it's on Zoom or MMTV or some of the meetings. This is how we discuss, you know, and then people get comments on those other. When it comes to real estate, this town can't say it's interested in a property without it already exponentially increasing its price, because people know the town is interested. I mean, that's why one of the primary things that's done in executive session, and that's stated very clear.
I understand that. What about the future, the path? Do you anticipate buying more land?
If it happens, we, you know, we can't say, we don't know what's out there, you know, but it's possible.
Items that don't have to do with buying land, do you anticipate letting the voters vote on that?
I'd let them vote, no. Even if you voted, you know, we would like your comment, but the select board has, according to the rules, the select board has the final thing. Because we had much more public participation than those that set up committees, because the committee is a small group of people, five to seven people, that are bidding whatever the ARPA funding is, that then goes to the select board for final approval.
Brian, would you, would you support the purchase or the use of some of the money for affordable housing, whatever that looks like?
I could answer all your surveys that you put out, so.
Oh, good.
I'll stick with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna, I think anything we do with this unprecedented money is going to be unprecedented. It's just one comment I add.
Bert Linn, oh, just a comment on this gentleman's question as to how the select board spent money in the past without town vote. I've been in town 58 years, and when I first came, we didn't have a landfill or a, all we had was a pit over by the big river to throw trash in. And the select board went out looking for land to create a landfill and place the foot trash. And one town, old farmer, of course, the population in town was only about 1,250, and but he went and negotiated with the land on Crown Trace, there were the garages. And he bought the land and came to the select board and said, "In 30 days, you could buy this parcel for $25,000." And the select board didn't have much time to consider it, but they bought that land and that's where the first landfill became, and it's now used by the town for other purposes. So there are, there are other occasions where the select board has gone out for the benefit of the town and spent funds.
Thank you, Bert.
Yeah, I think I might be related to that person too.
Hi, guys.
Hi, nice to see you, Robert.
Good to see you. This is kind of something that was, like Peter said, you can make any comments about the stuff that's on Front Porch Forum. And number one, I don't think the town of Jericho should be in the real estate business anyway. We've got enough with all these committees and stuff that's going on in town. But anyway, if, if, if we had been brought into the mix here before you made this decision, I think that's what, you wouldn't have seen these comments on the Front Porch Forum. And I think that we absolutely, that should have been discussed here and voted on. It shouldn't have been made by, I don't think that the select board is right in putting the Jericho taxpayers in the real estate business. And as far as affordable housing goes, we're living in one of the most expensive towns in Chittenden County. So who the hell is coming up with this idea that there's going to be affordable housing in a town of Jericho? And something that this gentleman said, that if his, if his folks had to come, they couldn't live in a town of Jericho. So how is anybody else going to live here when we're going to make a down payment on your building lot? Like, anyway, I just don't think we should be in the real estate business with all, with all that stuff you guys got to worry about. Robert Bartlett. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, ladies, Robert DeBose, stand up on my little mic. Not sure where to begin on this one. First of all, you can call me guilty, if you will, for making many quotes on Front Page Forum, but I want to make one thing clear. I have no question on anyone here on every trigality and what you hope to do, if you will. I, I support affordable housing, but to be quite frank, I just don't like the way this was done. I mean, it's just something has to be brought forth, you know, before the voter, before you spend such money. I think that's, to say though, we can't vote on this, that the select board has ultimate control over this, but why are we here? What's our purpose? I mean, if you're going to make these decisions, granted, you've had the surveys, whenever, many of us are participated in the surveys, but do they really do any good? Are you just baking up your own lines and, well, we went through the formality, but we're going to do as we blank please or whatever. And I don't like insinuations on front-page forums. It's, there's no paper, no free press, if you will, affording any knowledge. I think it's a very valuable tool. I think most people stay very civil and they state their cases. Granted, some of us get upset, yes, that's our right or whatever. But let's not go down the path where you start using words like, some people make racist comments or things like that. That's, I don't know of any that's been posted like that, and I wouldn't approve, I wouldn't make any comments like that. My final point I want to make is, one of the items that surveyed high, I know this, is infrastructure. But when you post the items stating for infrastructure, it limits one or two projects that some of us may approve, but some of us are saying, could we go a different direction with some of this money? I'll make this very brief. I live on my little mic, I live in my water, residential water, it's 16 houses. Several years ago, we lost water for months and operating the town, because the town had no obligation to do anything. And thank you very much, the town didn't do anything. Maybe the town wasn't even aware of it. So my proposal would be, why can't the select board meet with each water entity at least once or twice a year? And this is their concerns, and granted, if you know more of the concerns for this type of infrastructure, you can either wave it off and say, "No, it's not my responsibility. No, I'm a well owner, I have no concern over this." But you're talking residential water, you're talking infrastructure. If you, if you can't, I have a process, I've interviewed you many times on email, and I get no real response. At least meet with all the water entities, have a discussion, twice a year. See what they need, tell them what you can or cannot do. But water is the number-one vital infrastructure item we all need. So I would hope the select board would take it more seriously. And again, I don't envy your positions, it's a tough job, but I think we need to go more forward and get more input going forward. And it just takes a little bit of a strain studying this much money without much voter approval first. So I thank you for all your efforts, but please, I would like an answer. Can you not meet with the water, independent water entities in this town and at least have a discussion once or twice a year? Thank you.
Could you just stay for one second? I wanted to ask you about, and we've had some emails back and forth about that, as well as your request for some financial assistance, perhaps for your Neighborhood Water Association. So I'm trying to figure out what your, the town has a meeting with anybody who has either their own individual water system or neighborhood, for lack of a better word, neighborhood system. And then there's some sense of the status of that, each of those systems, and then based on that, those individuals would then perhaps receive some assistance from the, some financial assistance from the town? Is that what you're suggesting?
What I would favor is you have the ARPA funds, that small grants be given to providing, it's more resilient work on one's community wealth system, neighborhood wealth system, individual wells, but you use some of the ARPA funds to fund grants. Like, what we're facing now over my area of town is, basically, the state is saying we have to go through a large procedure to uproot most of the system, examine it, and put it back in. If it works, fine. If it doesn't, my house and 16 or 17 others are going to owe thousands of dollars out of our pocket. So I'm not saying the town should be responsible for this, but you have these funds available for infrastructure, so it applying grants, you at least eliminate part of the money that we would have to pay out of pocket. And this would also go for independent well owners too, if, if it qualifies. That, that's all I'm saying. Just grant money and if it's a legitimately used independent well owners or water entities that serve, that serve our neighborhoods. So that, that's where I look for, I give. I would like, it's his last thing though, if you could please, someone mentioned, cannot, that such a meeting take place where once or twice a year, you meet with all the water entities? Is, could you make it a commitment that at least you sit down and talk? If, I, I think it's wrong to ignore this question.
I, I, I think, uh, such a meeting would be okay. I'm a little leery, as we, I've expressed to you before, the town beginning to award grants to individual water systems or neighborhood water, that makes me a little like, hey. Now, if, if it was seed money or if it's to leverage more money or, sure, but, but the little bit that I know about, and um, I know somebody who was involved in some water system stuff in Bristol, that stuff is phenomenally expensive. And if we had a little kitty of $100,000, that's a big kitty. Uh, if we had a little kitty of money, I, I just don't know how far that goes. So individual A, B, C, and neighborhood one gets the money and then we're out of the money. What about everybody? That, and, you know, maybe there's a way around that, but that's, that's really my only concern.
Right. I'm not asking for unlimited funds. I'm saying this, the A R P money, you had 1.4 billion. You've spent $380,000 with really not too much public opinion on this.
Well, I, I, I disagree with that.
Okay, okay, fine. But if you take, say, a rough number, $50,000 or something dollars of the A R P money, you list strict guidelines and you put them out as grants to every neighborhood water community, you know, that survives, excuse me, that provides water to our town. If they qualify to those strict guidelines and the money is, you know, watched carefully, then that's money well spent. Why, you're, Jericho does not have almost any infrastructure or city services whatsoever. And this would be, if you want us to stay, if you want us to have, keep our land and home values up, you need water to, to run the town, to run our homes. So it's grant money. It's not going on for years and years. I wouldn't agree for that either. I agree with you. But you have this pie of money, take part of it and spend it toward what we all need every day. Clean drinking water for our homes. That's all I'm asking. So can I please ask again, would you, with the sports, uh, the select board please commit maybe to a meeting once or twice a year with all the water, independent neighborhood water entities and discuss?
I would, I would, as an individual, certainly would be interested in ha, hosting one meeting to see where that goes after that.
And there would be public comment after that, provided how the meeting, uh, what went on at the meeting, or whatever, what resulted from the meeting?
Sure, depending on, again, I'm, my, my biggest concern is the li, the financial liability.
Oh, no, I agree. I don't want to, I wouldn't want to go on. You, I'm just concerned in the A R P money and turning a small amount of into grants, nothing more than that, nothing spanning it through the whole town of Jericho. Uh, can I ask Catherine or Eric, would they commit to such a meeting?
I like the way Wayne phrased it. I'd, I'd like to hear one, see what other kind of interest there is. Yeah, I think that, that sounds reasonable. I don't, I think twice a year. You'd be amazed at how much stuff comes up, even if it's twice a year.
And would the select board set such a time and date? Now, do you agree to it? Not, not right now, not immediately, but would you set such a time and date? Or would be, yes, maybe read, but seven months?
I think you could include it as an agenda item in an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, put it on the agenda item in an upcoming meeting, maybe establish, you know, let's do it in June or, you know, whatever the date is. That would be the next step.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Chris Sims, I've lived within almost eyesight of the, um, two Jericho, uh, railroad circle. I've paid federal taxes and yet Bernie Sanders doesn't call me every time he's making a vote on anything financial. And similarly, you have been elected to your position by the citizens of Jericho, and if you had to tell, you know, ask all of our permission to do whatever you want, do you wouldn't do the terrible work at all? I trust you to have Jericho's best interests at heart. And I think you've done your due diligence as far as putting out your surveys and all that, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Dave Vianton, uh, having the town spend some money, uh, to buy property to use for affordable housing may seem unprecedented, and it probably is in a lot of towns. But it is within the bounds of proposed solutions to the affordable housing situation. I'm an individual member of the Vermont Affordable Housing Coalition. So I've been following the various ways for solutions for affordable housing. Going down this path is one of those solutions.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to respond. There's no Bobby Miller driving into town deciding he's going to do a development for affordable housing. Isn't that nice to him? It, it's not going to work that way. And this is a one-time opportunity. Just get a little foothold. I'll be drooling in my applesauce at some senior home in Crasberg by the time this thing gets built, probably. But if there's one family, I, I just want to leave this, this whole discussion hopefully with this image. One of the partners works at Blodgett Ovens. The other partner works at Twin State making soap or whatever they make over here by I, IBM. They're driving down from Bakersfield because they can't afford a house. They want to have a baby and they don't have enough money. They heard about a great school. They can't get in the door. And I just hope that at the end of this gnashing of teeth, a couple families get a break. Oh my God, I'm starting to gesture like Bernie. A, a couple families get a break and there's some young 25-year-old woman who looks at her husband and says, "You know, maybe we could have a baby. Maybe we could live in this town. Let's get real. Bobby Miller is not coming. There is no Santa Claus." So thank you so much for your support. It's not for me. I'm not making a nickel. Nobody stuck a thousand-dollar bill under my wiper blade. Infuriating. Because the private sector isn't going to do this. Thank you.
And to add on to that, if I thought of it, I see you saying, and I've heard Chuck say it probably 50 times a week. The people that haven't been able to afford to live here don't get a vote because they aren't here. They aren't citizens because they can't do it, so they don't get, they don't get that vote, so.
Excuse me, because I want to just, it's so sad, so sad how many families, the people like us with gray hair, they're can't, I'm an exception. My son gets to live in town. They can't live here. And I can't move anywhere. I can't afford to move someplace. I get to stay in my house unless I'm going to move up to Crasberry. I mean, it just, that's, I wish it was different. And I, I know, Robin, we don't agree on it, but I just, my heart goes after these young families.
How do you, Robin, how do you think they're going for to live here? If we're going to buy their building law, how, how the hell are they going to make the payment on the house? And I don't think the Jericho taxpayers should, came here to, to take up Bobby Miller's, to take up Bobby Miller's slack either.
You're right. You're right. I agree with you on that. You're right.
All of us trying to, you know, having to put down payments on somebody else's bill without this bullshit. Well, this can't help me. Anything, anything else? Get it out of our business. If not, be honest. There it is. It is.
Lisa Kersberg, um, this is not a complaint directed at you. It's just a general citizen's complaint. It's two things related to safe road safety. Okay, so I would like to make a complaint to the select board about people texting while driving through Jericho. "Don't drive through Jericho and text. I don't want to drive past you while your car is going 10 miles per hour over the speed limit texting because you think the roads are empty." And I was wondering if the town can, um, decide if we want to look into a way to bring more attention to this issue within our town. The second thing is, in the summer of 2021, a child was hit by a car across from J C on Route 15. And I was wondering if the town would like to decide if, um, we can erect a stone memorial in her honor and memory. And this is something that you can maybe put on your to-do list or whatever. I don't expect it to be done today. Thank you.
Uh, this part, I think I'll just ask if there's a motion to adjourn. All right. Thank you for coming. Thank you for persisting. And we'll see you next year. Even in the afternoon or the evening.